Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to day two of the May 2024 North Carolina State Board of Education Planning and Work Session. We're coming to you today from the beautiful Appalachian State University campus and spent yesterday listening to a number of Appalachian State students, aspiring teachers, and they shared terrific insights. We learned from many of our partners in the Northwest District of North Carolina yesterday about the great things that are happening in public schools in North Carolina. And today, we're pleased to have many of the local superintendents with us. If you would please stand when I call your name, we'd love to thank you for your dedicated service to the students of North Carolina. And I'll begin by recognizing my good friend and a former superintendent in this area, Dr. Jack Hoak. Jack? Also here, Dr. Erin Allen of Lincoln County Schools, Dr. Leslie Alexander of Watauga County Schools, Dr. Isa Cox of Ash County Schools, Dr. Erin Gabriel of Newton Conover Schools, Dr. Rodney Peterson of Pearson County Schools, Dr. Travis Reeves of Surrey County Schools, Dr. David Sutton, Rutherford County Schools, Dr. Mike Swain, Burke County Schools, Dr. Missy Weaver, Allegheny County Schools, Dr. Barry Williams, Gates County Schools, and of course, our own Don Phipps of Caldwell County Schools. Would you please join me in thanking these leaders? In addition to this area being home of terrific educators and this wonderful university, we're also fortunate that this is the home of one of our board colleagues. And at this time, I'm delighted to recognize my good friend, Mr. John Blackburn, who hails from this area. Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to add my greetings and welcome to the Northwest Region of North Carolina and also to Appalachian State, which holds a very special place for me. I wasn't smart enough to go to school here way back 50 years ago, but they were kind and gave me an honorary degree, and I served as the trustee of this amazing place twice in my career. And I left the App State Board to be on the State Board of Education. So I was thrilled with yesterday's presentations, and we've got a lot more in store for us today. I hope you will take in all the good things that are going on in Northwest North Carolina in your visit here and encourage you to come back every day in Boone. It's just like today, isn't it, Donna? So it's always 70 and sunny in Boone. Thank you all for being here. Thank my superintendents in the Northwest Region. Appreciate y'all showing out in force today. So once again, welcome to the mountains, and it's our honor to host the State Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. And before we jump into our work focused on the teaching profession, we're grateful to be joined by someone who shares our passion for supporting teachers across the state and who lives that mission every single day. We're delighted to call on Dr. Melba Spooner, the Dean of the Wright College of Education here at Appalachian State University.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Blackburn, and Board. We welcome you. And I want to say good welcome, good welcome, and good morning to everyone here in the room today. Wow, the superintendents, you do show up and sometimes show out, right? But you're here, and we really appreciate that. It was really great to be able to be with you all yesterday, and I'm so happy to be able to share some of the important work that's being done right here at Appalachian State University within the Wright College of Education. For those of you who I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, let me introduce myself. I'm Melba Spooner, and I have the honor, and I mean that sincerely, of being the Dean of the Wright College of Education at Appalachian State University. On behalf of my colleagues within the college and across the campus, I welcome you. So the last time I had the opportunity to speak before the State Board of Education was in June 2020, and we were not able to be in person. I served on the North Carolina State Board of Education Literacy Task Force and shared our recommendations to the Board around pre-service preparation and licensure at that time. This morning, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share some highlights of the ongoing work of educator preparation here at Appalachian, particularly in the Wright College of Education, that provides some insights into the enduring legacy of preparing educators here, as well as to demonstrate that we are constantly growing and changing how we do this important work of preparing educators. It's important to note, at least for me, as I stand before you, how grateful, how very grateful I am for this moment. I'm proud to say that I'm a North Carolina public school educator. I'm a proud product of the P-12 Public Education System in North Carolina, and I'm a product of the P-16 Public Education System in North Carolina. And now, I am able to spend every day as Dean of a college of education within a university that puts education first. I'm so proud of the collaborations and the partnerships, and that's demonstrated right here today, and it happens every day. But I'm so proud of the collaborations and partnerships that we've built and that we've sustained over the years. They have only gotten stronger, and they'll continue to do so. Yesterday, you had the opportunity to hear from some of our students, from some of our partners, and we look forward to hearing from more today. So let me share just a few highlights, key highlights, about the college and some things that set us apart so that you might have a better understanding of the work that we do, have done, and will continue to do. A key focus for me and for my leadership team and the collective faculty is to continue to seek new and innovative ways to bring individuals into the education profession. We're constantly examining our recruitment efforts and ways of retaining individuals in our collective programs, as well as offering flexible, alternative, and traditional pathways to meet the needs of students and to keep them in the pipeline and progressing toward a degree and/or a teaching credential. With more than 9,500 alumni employed in North Carolina public schools, almost all 100 counties in North Carolina employ an App State alum, teacher, or administrator. Additionally, we engage with nearly 50 school districts across the state for our clinical experiences, including our K-5 Lab School in Walertown, North Carolina, which is the academy at Middlefort. Our footprint across the state is huge. My motto typically is, "We cannot do what we do and stay on the mountain," and we don't. This week, beginning Friday and going through Saturday evening, the Wright College of Education is hosting the Future Teachers of North Carolina Western Region Event. This event is sponsored by the University of North Carolina System with the purpose of encouraging high school juniors and seniors to consider the teaching profession by providing a meaningful and challenging opportunity to learn more about the preparation, the responsibilities, and the experiences that come with the pursuit of a career in teaching. And I've already talked to Lilly this morning about what that means. This event will bring more than 100 high school juniors and seniors to this campus, and we are so happy and grateful for doing this. It'll be filled with opportunities to hear from faculty and to engage with current education students and to learn more about the teaching profession. So also during your time with us, you've heard and you'll continue to hear about how we are partnering with and in creating the pipelines with community colleges and P-12 public schools to engage individuals to pursue teaching as a career. And you may have already heard, but just in case, App State is joining nine other colleges and universities statewide to partner with the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program to offer the fellows program here beginning in fall of 2024. And because I know it is important to have a deep understanding of what the real world of being a teacher is all about, we provide authentic experiences that we know students, pre-service teachers, will encounter when they get into their schools. For example, one of the things that all teacher education students at Appalachian are required to complete is a series of professional development activities with a total of 20 by the time they reach the end of their clinical internship. Last year, the college began partnering with participant learning to offer a Global Leader Scholars Program as part of our professional development offerings. This program provides our teacher candidates with a foundation in global competencies, teaches them how to become global citizens, and it helps them to realize their role and their value as future teachers in a globally connected and competitive workforce. So as we all know, a strong instructional leader is essential. This is typically the school-building level principle. We are currently in the third year of a partnership with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for the Wallace-funded Equity-Centered Pipeline Initiative Grant. This initiative supports the development of evidence-based principal practices and pipelines in high-needs districts. As a principal preparation provider, we contribute to the strengthening of the district's pipeline, particularly in identifying and in developing teacher leaders, which is a critical component of this initiative. So speaking of strong school-building level principles, we are also a part, as we talked about yesterday, of the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program. In fall of 2022, we welcomed our first cohort, and this group of App State Principal Fellows will graduate next week, with five of those 15 already transitioning into assistant principal roles. A week ago, we interviewed candidates for the second cohort, and our aim is to increase the size of the cohort by 30% for fall of 2024. I mentioned earlier the professional development requirement of our preparation program, and I honestly believe, because that's not a requirement in all ed prep programs, but I believe that this is an important factor in helping our teacher education students see the value and the commitment to lifelong learning and professional development. I know the chancellor said yesterday that we talked about this being the eighth consecutive year, but Appalachian State leads the nation, yes, nation, in the number of alumni earning or renewing their National Board certification. And currently, we have 2,321 alums with this outstanding credential, and we're grateful for the state of North Carolina in supporting that work as well. We continue to drive research, innovation, and creativity within the college. For example, our annual Innovation Expo hosted by the App State Public Partnership provides the space and the support for partner schools to showcase their innovations. This is an amazing opportunity filled with ideas and real-time, real-life examples of the great ideas and the opportunities that educators develop and implement in their classrooms every day. As you know, supporting and engaging with new teachers and beginning teachers is essential. It's important to make the transition from pre-service, we heard a lot about this yesterday, to in-service as seamless as possible. In that vein, our partnership with the North Carolina New Teacher Support Program has grown significantly, now assisting 155 teachers across 13 school districts, supported by five coaches that we employ here at Appalachian. We also continue to support a Mathematics and Science Education Center within the Wright College of Education. And this year, the center leadership, in collaboration with our faculty, began offering a mathematics clinic for students in grades K-2. This is another opportunity for our pre-service teachers to experience and practice effective instructional techniques in real life, real time. We remain at the forefront of literacy education, having redesigned courses last year to emphasize the science of reading. And we also received a nice contribution from the Meben Charitable Foundation of $100,000 earlier this year to expand reading assistance for K-3 students in Watauga and Catawba County Schools. We will continue to grow this work at our Hickory Campus as well. So this morning, I want to thank you. I know you've had long days, you've had probably a short night, but we welcome you here to this beautiful campus, to this beautiful time with us, and for allowing me to share with you all the great work, some of the great work, there's a lot more to talk about that's being done at App State, as we prepare tomorrow's education leaders to make meaningful contributions inside and outside of the classroom. Thank you so much for all you do and for being here with us now.
Dr. Spooner, thank you for those remarks, but even more, thank you for your leadership of the College of Education here and for the many contributions that you and your team are making to public school students all across North Carolina. We appreciate you. Next, I'm delighted to call on Dr. Erin Gabriel, the Superintendent of Newton County, excuse me, Newton Conover City Schools, and President of the Northwest RISA.
I will try to clean up my dialect a little bit, because when I saw the closed captioning here at the bottom, I am hoping it's a little more forgiving than my talk-to-text language, because if not, this could get quite interesting. So give me this number if it starts saying something that I'm not intending to say. I just want to welcome you guys to our beautiful region of North Carolina. It's an honor to have the State Board of Ed meeting here in Northwest Region in lovely Boone. We in the great Northwest are quite fond of our region, of the state, and believe it's indeed God's country. The irony of me welcoming you guys, if it wasn't for Mr. Blackburn, me catching him downstairs, I might still be walking around campus trying to figure out where this meeting is. So thank you, Mr. Blackburn, for that. The Northwest Region school system includes Alexander County Schools, Allegheny County Schools, Ash County Schools, Burke County Schools, Caldwell County Schools, Catawba County Schools, Elkin City Schools, Hickory City Schools, the North Carolina School for the Deaf, of course, Newton Conover City Schools, Watauga County Schools, and Wilkes County Schools. On behalf of the Northwest Region superintendents and the wonderful district school staff, and most importantly, students we serve, I'd like to welcome distinguished Chair Davis and members of the State Board of Education, esteemed colleagues from Department of Public Construction, Ms. Truitt and staff, and fellow superintendents from the Northwest Region, as well as superintendents around the state who are joining us today. I'm very fortunate to work with such a wonderful group of district leaders, and our children are very fortunate to be able to thrive under their leadership. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Hobbs, our retiring, I think for the second or third time now, Northwest RISA Executive Director. Appreciate his leadership, especially during the pandemic, of our region and superintendents council. And Dr. Terry Worrell will be our next executive director, and she is an EDS holder from Appalachian State, as am I, I'm proud to report. And also, very thankful, Dr. Spooner's presentation with App, they're a wonderful partner of ours in higher ed for our public school districts, and we're excited about this weekend's event. And yours truly will be able to put his CDL to work, because I'll be driving a group of prospective kids up here and be their chaperon. So it's gonna be awesome, all right? But as a State Board and Department of Public Construction, if I may for a moment, you guys are laser-focused on students and how to set goals and action steps to equip them with knowledge, skills, and abilities so they're able to compete in a rapidly changing, highly technical world. But there's a much bigger picture of what public education provides our students that often does not show up on a data report. Let me briefly elaborate with a story. Once heard a story about a father who was trying to solve a dilemma that occurred every time he was out of town for business. You see, each night before bed, the father would sit his son on his lap and read a story to him from a very specific bedtime storybook, after which said child would fall asleep. The man's wife would report to him that every time he was away, the child would struggle mightily to calm down, relax, and subsequently fall asleep. The man, a problem solver by nature, came up with a foolproof solution to the bedtime quandary. He got a trusty tape recorder, and again, this story was written before the days of the voice recorders on your cellphone, but he would get a tape recorder and read all the stories contained in the child's favorite storybook. He was just certain that the problem would be solved, and that his young son would have no problem falling asleep the next time that he was away. Well, that next time came, and he was away on business, and he tasked his wife with laying the child down on his bed at night and pushing play on the tape player. He was optimistic to find out if his solution worked. So the next morning, he excitedly called his wife, and he found out his plan failed. If anything, the child struggled to fall asleep even more than when he went to bed with no entertainment. The man hoped the next night would be better, and unfortunately, it was not. Disheartened and a little bit perturbed, the man returned home from his business trip. At dinner that evening, the father sought to find out from his son why his strategy did not work. The dad asked, "Were the stories I recorded not the same ones that I read to you when I'm home?" "Yes," was the reply. "And did I not read the stories with the same voice and the same excitement as when I'm home?" "Yes," was the reply. "Then what is the problem? Why can't you fall asleep like you do when I'm home and I read you?" The little boy's lower lip started to quiver, and he replied, "Because the tape player doesn't have a lap." Public schools are a lap for communities that otherwise would not have an identity. Public schools are a lap in which a hope for a brighter future resides. More than this, our public schools are laps for many students who desperately need one, children from broken homes, homeless kids, kids who are hungry, kids struggling with severe illnesses, kids with mental illnesses, and kids dealing with loss. All of these kids find a lap in our public schools. In the past three days, I've been profoundly reminded of this, as a couple of my middle school son's friends are experiencing a parent going into hospice care with little hope for survival, and a son whose father, a U.S. Marshal, didn't come home from work on Monday. These children come to school needing something that no standard can define, no assessment can measure, and no intervention can completely rectify. But the children come, and thank God that public schools are there to provide a lap for them. Never forget that there are names and faces behind the numbers. Thank you all for believing in public education and for standing in the gap for a generation of children that desperately need you. May God bless today's proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, to you and all of your colleagues in the Northwest District of our state. Thank you for leading our schools. We'll now pause for just a moment and reflect on some of the events yesterday. You may recall that we began after some terrific welcomes with a presentation by Mr. Coltrane about the Comprehensive Remedial Plan, which, to summarize, I think the best summary is North Carolina was doing a lot of really good things. We just weren't doing enough of them, or they weren't large enough, or they weren't meeting all the needs. And there were a few things we needed to add, to complement the good things that were already being done. And so the current comprehensive plan, while the dollars may not be in align with the planned years, the programs and the focus in the areas that need attention are just as accurate today as they were the day the plan was written. Mr. Coltrane, would you add to that, please?
I think you summarized it well, and particularly in the areas we're talking about that the Board's focused on this week with effective teachers in every classroom, that some of those key pipeline investments are even more critical today, I think, than they were four years ago when the plan was developed.
Great, thank you. And so then we took off on that first objective, an effective teacher in every classroom, and had the opportunity to listen to some Appalachian State students who are aspiring teachers, and if nothing else, that inspired us all and gave us great confidence that our future teachers will, coming out of this institution in particular, will do a terrific job. And we also heard from one Appalachian State student who made a different decision, and her courage to frankly share the facts of that decision on her part, along with her continued desire to be a teacher, was certainly enlightening. And then we looked into some areas of recruitment and the Appalachian community of education scholars, or ACES, and the effectiveness of that program. And then Dr. Korn gave us an overview of the Teacher Working Conditions Survey, the much-improved Teacher Working Conditions Survey, and the data that was available. And we worked with that data a bit yesterday to put ourselves in the shoes of a superintendent or principal. And then finally, we heard a number of presentations about beginning teacher support and the effectiveness of the teacher support programs that we have and the need to expand them. Currently, we're only reaching about 10% of our beginning teachers, and the results are particularly effective for those 10%, particularly those with students who come from low-income areas, teachers of color, or teachers who face, and their students face, other challenges. This beginning teacher support is vital to the success of our students going forward. We then heard about some partnerships with Caldwell County, Appalachian State's partnership with Burke and Catawba County, and those presentations highlighted existing efforts around teacher cadet, beginning teacher support, and student teacher support, and the insight that with so many teachers coming to us through the residency approach to consider them as beginning teachers or even student teachers, and they need the support regardless of their age. So it was a great day to learn and listen and to celebrate the good things that are working across our schools. So I'll pause now. Any colleagues or advisors have other insights or comments they'd like to share from yesterday's work? Mr. Blackburn.
It's not really relevant to yesterday's work, although it is a little bit, but we did hear the challenges of social media. And so this morning, I opened up my social media, and I realized today is Principal Appreciation Day. So I'd like to lift up all the principals across the state of North Carolina, particularly Mr. Green and Ms. Bledsoe. So thank you, and thanks to the internet for letting us know how we should appreciate our principals. But that is a little bit of something I learned yesterday, is we need to be relevant and need to understand that. So that's number one. Number two, thank you and all your colleagues for what you do for our students.
Perfect. Other reflections or comments? Okay, well then we'll dive into today's work, and I'll turn to Mr. Fafaria to kick that off.
Thank you, Chair. So yesterday, we spent a lot of time thinking about teacher recruitment and preparation, as well as supports for our beginning teachers. Today, we're going to start our morning with a presentation on a partnership that kind of ties it all together, that kind of runs through all of this work. And we'll do that before we move on to today's work, which will be around opportunities for advancement within the teaching profession. But right now, I would like to call up presenters from three institutions. We've got App State, CCC and TI, and Caldwell County Schools.
We're so glad to be back with you today for another beautiful day in Boone. Thank you again for being here, and thank you to our colleagues, friends, and partners for joining us today. I'm Betsy Rosenbaum, the Director of the Public School Partnership, Regional Director for North Carolina New Teacher Support, and the Director for the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program here at App State. I'm joined with three colleagues here, Dr. Mark Porch, the President of Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute, Dr. Don Phipps, the Superintendent of Caldwell County Schools, and Dr. Terry McLannan, one of our Associate Deans in the Wright College of Education. Today, we're going to talk with you about an interesting partnership that was a formalized partnership solidified out of deep trust and relational work that we have been doing in this region for quite some time. Cultivated over time, the spirit of collaboration between the leaders in these three institutions allowed us to embark on a journey in the 2022-23 school year, where we worked with the North Carolina Public School Forum to create a partnership called the North Carolina Educator Pipeline Collaborative. And this specifically was related to our work in the Caldwell County community. We have a map on the screen that we can show you that just positions ourself here in this region. As you can see, Appalachian State's in the top corner of the Northwest Region, and right down the mountain, we partner with Caldwell County Schools and our friends Caldwell Community College, both in Watauga County and in Caldwell County. So this work is deeply embedded in the work that we do and the partnerships that we have every day. As we all know, the Public School Forum of North Carolina is working to ensure that all North Carolina students have access to a diverse, highly-effective educator workforce. As a part of this commitment, in 2022-23, there was a partnership between the North Carolina Office of the Governor, the Belk Foundation, and the Belk Endowment that launched this North Carolina Educator Pipeline Collaborative. And so we were the inaugural group, one of eight partnerships, that were able to receive some funding to work together to find ways to partner, to bring some funding to work together to find ways to partner to bring forth a community of prospective educators in Caldwell County who were interested in being teachers but may not have had the funds, the flexibility, or the availability of resources to move forward in that program or process. And so today, we're going to talk to you about how Caldwell Community College, Caldwell County Schools, and Appalachian State University Public School Partnership work together to form that pipeline initiative. And we have some really great data to share with you about what is already happening with regards to this partnership. The goals that you see here can highlight and outline some of the things we've been talking about this week. You'll see words up on the screen such as highlighting successful partnerships, recruiting, preparing, supporting, retaining diverse, high-quality educators, meeting the contextual needs of our community, and also sharing findings and sharing recommendations for ways that we can influence policy. And so together, my colleagues and I are going to share with you what that partnership looked like here this past school year and what it continues to look like as we engage together in this pipeline work. Dr. Phipps?
As you can see on the screen, the three bullets that we have here are representative of the Caldwell County Schools' role and our responsibility in the pipeline. Of course, there's a lot of heavy lifting when you look at providing tuition reimbursement for both the Community College courses and courses at Appalachian State. I do want to say our Board Chairman here from Caldwell County, Darrell Pennell, is here, and we couldn't do what we're doing if it weren't for the support of our Board of Education. And they agreed that they would cover the tuition costs for our employees that go through the Community College. The real benefit for us is we stretched from just classified employees to include existing students. We looked at students who were in traditional high school courses that wanted to become teachers, to try to guide and direct them into some other courses through their career. We talked about the opportunity to provide Career and College Promise courses that allowed students at no cost to be able to take those Community College classes while they were students of hours and earn credit in addition to not having to pay any tuition costs. And then creating a teacher cadet program last year that never existed in our county, or we brought it back to life, and we'll share some of that with you. We also felt like it was important to issue a device, a piece of technology, for all of our students to be able to have as they matriculated through the program, and then also consider participants for open teaching positions, which is not a problem now, as hard as it is to find candidates. This was an opportunity to truly grow our own. And then identify prospective students from those that exist within our student population and also within our classified population. And we don't limit that just to instructional assistants. That includes bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, anyone in a role in our school district that wants to become a teacher. We want to work with them and give them an opportunity, and our goal is to really try to remove barriers. So that's the Caldwell County Schools' role. I'll let Dr. Porch talk about the Community College role at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Truitt. Thank you for letting a Community College guy in the room. I appreciate that. We are so proud to partner with Caldwell County Schools and App State in this, you know, just critical initiative in our communities and in our state. Kind of our role in the partnership has been, we launched a degree program in teacher prep, which was fairly new to the Community College system, both an Associate in Arts and an Associate Science degree in teacher prep, which really provides the first two years of a four-year degree. So students are taking their general education courses as well as education courses as part of that program. And really, what it required us to do is kind of take a look in the mirror. How are we offering the program? What could we do to make the program more flexible and more attractive to people who are already working in our school system? So we have converted many of our courses to online courses or hybrid courses to give students that flexibility. And we've also moved courses to an eight-week model, which is kind of different for the Community College system, which traditionally operates on a 16-week model. So now, students who are attending this program part-time can actually complete in six semesters and kind of move their pathway along pretty quickly. So we're very proud of that. It's going extremely well. Part of the, our role in that, that part of the initiative is to make sure that we are providing intensive advising to those students so they understand what that pathway looks like and the courses they need to take, the timeline, et cetera, et cetera. So great success, and you'll hear some statistics from Dr. McLennan here in just a minute on that. Another key part of the program, I think, is that the way we have it set up with the lab parts of the course, which is 144 hours in the program, those employees from Caldwell County Schools are actually able to complete those lab hours in the school that they currently work. So they're not having to leave that school and go to a different location to complete those lab hours. And we're certainly trying to provide as much support, academic support, that we can for students as they're going through the program and as they're preparing to take the praxis exam. And I'll share with you one thing you probably wouldn't want me to tell you, but probably one of the most unique things about our program is that our superintendent, Dr. Phipps, teaches in that program every semester. So it gives prospective students and current employees of Caldwell County Schools kind of a bird's-eye view of what happens and getting that superintendent's perspective on his work. He says it's selfish and that he can attract and kind of get first dibs on employees, but I always say it's his commitment to education and the future of our teachers and the importance of that work that kind of creates that involvement. We're very proud of the partnership and happy to be here today. Thank you.
Good morning, and welcome to Appalachian State. Appalachian is very proud to be part of this opportunity, and I truly mean that it is an opportunity for us. With our new campus, App State at Hickory, it's an opportunity for us to take advantage of the Community College partnerships that we have with six community colleges that were within an hour of our campus there. It's also an opportunity for us to take a look at our programming, for our curriculum, for our modalities of options. And part of that is developing a part-time opportunity, more flexible opportunities for nights, evenings, and weekends for pathways, folks, those individuals that need to maintain the employment as part of this process. So it's crucial for us to take advantage, the associates and teacher preparation degrees at our community colleges, and articulate those in. We also have a program here at Appalachian called Aspire Appalachian. We have partnerships with nine Community College partners where they're guaranteed admission to Appalachian, advising support, scholarship opportunities, and other opportunities. And you hear opportunities a lot today because it really is an opportunity. But the Aspire program guarantees admission to Appalachian and a more seamless process for them transitioning to us. So again, taking advantage of that and also making sure that our students are aware of the scholarships available to them. We're very fortunate in the College of Education that we provide more scholarship dollars on our campus than any other college, but students have to apply, and there are needs out there. So we need to make sure that we're communicating that as well. Again, advising is key to this early in their career, and again, building and partnering with our community colleges on that as well. So at this time, I'll turn it back over to Betsy, I think.
We want to share with you some data. These are the action steps as well, and the data we'll follow. But there were two North Carolina Educator Pipeline meetings that we held with the Caldwell County Schools employees, just to let them know what things looked like. And just anecdotally, I can share with you, Dr. Porch mentioned that I teach in the program. When I first started, we had eight in one class. I had 14 in another. When we did the full-court press that we're going to talk about here in Action Steps, I combined with another instructor, and we had 52 students in the program. So the numbers are there. Now, whether we can maintain that number across the board, but we know that there's an interest, and we've attracted students, and we want to make sure that we can continue them. So with part of that being the second bullet that we tried to build awareness of in advertising for the associate's degree in teacher preparation with high school students, the students that are in the class that I'm teaching include high school students and adults. Some are employees of ours, some are adults that are taking courses that want to be teachers that right now don't currently have an affiliation, but we want to build that in with Caldwell County Schools. App State's had three meetings with the apprenticeship, North Carolina and RTI, to discuss creating educational partnerships in the Northwest North Carolina region, and not on this list because it's brand new. We've had two meetings inside our county to create those partnerships as well. So we're looking forward to making that happen. And then also, I've been invited to be a part of a DPI planning group that's going to be going on in the next month or so to look at apprenticeships for teachers. As you've heard, North Carolina Teaching Fellows is coming to App State, adding elementary education option. That's a big deal for us. And then we also received a $50,000 grant from the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Commission for recruitment and working on our pipeline work. So this was a shot in the arm when we really needed it to be able to do some work across the board. App State also created an MOU with DPI to begin articulation agreement of six hours for college credit for high school students who take CTE courses. And this is called, it's a professional pathway that exists that allows them to take those courses through the CTE program, not just in Caldwell County, but across the districts in our region. Thirty-eight students have taken teacher cadet programs in our school system in this school year. Remember, this is brand new, and that's across three traditional high schools. So we anticipate that will be growing quite a bit. Two of our three teacher cadet classes attended the North Carolina Teacher Cadet Conference back in March, and they'll be here at App State over the next couple of days coming up for the event that you've heard about. App State visited all of our teacher cadet classes this year to give a college access presentation. The Sun Belt Conference Grant that was received was used in these programs. Flexible part-time models for teacher education programs were being created, and this is critical. In fact, when we had our first conversation, we all sat down to talk about what we needed but what we felt like obstacles could potentially be. And we're talking about adults that are working in classified jobs. Those are not individuals that can stop working and enroll full-time to become a teacher or to work on becoming a teacher. So that, it was incumbent on us for us to have the partnership that we had to have flexible schedules where the teachers who were adults could continue to work and earn the wage that they're earning and then be able to be in class at night or on weekends. And we've had great partnerships to do that. This will involve programming that will be increased at the Hickory campus for the education programs. And then there was also an Ed NC article on the Caldwell Educator Pipeline Collaborative that we'd encourage you to take a look at.
Given that we're still in the early stages of this partnership and the pathways program, we're really excited about the data that we have so far. And we're talking a little over a year for people to be in this program. And there are multiple pathways to enter into the profession. We all know that. So part of the pathway that we developed is taking a look at our teacher cadet program. The work that Dr. Rosenbaum is doing with our teacher cadet program, particularly in Caldwell County Schools, is really important with 28 cadets there. The interest within the district itself is really powerful. We've, we held interest meetings, surveys, so 54 individuals are interested in this pipeline, and there are currently seven of those employees that are in the pipeline currently. And Dr. Porch and his team at Caldwell Community College are really encouraging students to enter into the profession through the associate degrees in teacher prep with 69 individuals in that program. So as we continue to develop these, in addition to the early college on the Caldwell, early college campus, it's a great opportunity for us again. And we also have two instructional assistants that are in there. So the possibilities are there. We need time and energy and resources to make that happen.
And I'm going to close this out with Sierra's story that kind of sums up, I think, the impact of the work we're doing. And this is quoted from Sierra. She says, "I am a busy mom of two boys, ages nine and 12, and another one on the way. I started working for Caldwell County Schools in 2015 and started in the cafeteria at Hudson Elementary School. I then transferred to Lower Creek Elementary, and as my children got older, I began to think about going back to school to pursue my dream of being a teacher. To make sure this is what I wanted to do, I got a job at Lower Creek Elementary as a kindergarten assistant. In this role, I realized that is exactly what I wanted to do. So I started classes at CCC NTI to finish my associate degree to be able to transfer to App State for my teaching degree. Then I received information from Caldwell County Schools about a new pipeline program. The pipeline is a team with Caldwell County Schools, CCC NTI, and App State coming together to create a personalized plan for assistants to become teachers. It was perfect for me. So far, the process has been great. I feel like I have the guidance and all of the help I can get in this process. They have been there through every step. It also offers tuition reimbursement and access to a device for you to complete your schoolwork. It can be, it can be challenging going back to school, especially with all of life's obstacles, but the pipeline has made the process easier. My husband is a truck driver and gone during the week, and also in Army Reserves for which he has gone some for. So I am on my own with our children during the week, then working full-time and being pregnant with our last child. It can be challenging. But if I can do it, I know others can as well. I would encourage any assistant considering going back to school to take advantage of the pipeline and the help it provides." That's from Sierra. Mr. Chairman, that's why we're doing it. That's the impact it can have, and we're very proud of the work, very proud of the partnerships. Thank you all.
Are there any questions for or comments? Madam Superintendent?
I have two. I have two questions. So first of all, Don, I just want to say this is why you are the Superintendent of the Year. You do everything so well, and you've clearly partnered with the right people to make this I have a question about the Community College piece, Mark. So when you say six semesters, are those still traditional semesters even though they're online?
They are. They are, but they can do the eight weeks. So if they're doing eight, you know, two eight-week courses, for example, in a 16-week semester, they can kind of double up on the number of courses they can get.
Okay, so is it taking three years to, I mean, two semesters is a year?
They can go during the summer, too.
They can go during the summer.
Yeah, so they can basically get, get the two-year degree in two years but go in part-time.
By going part-time?
That's right.
Okay, wonderful. Wonderful. That's amazing. So where else is this, what other IHEs is this being done in? Because I would hazard a guess, none.
Yeah, we like to be out front.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any, I'm sure there's great work being done, you know, across our state as people are trying to work on, you know, developing a teacher pipeline. I'm not real familiar with other areas, though.
Would our friend from App State care to comment on that? I mean, do you know of any other, or perhaps Dean Spooner, if she's still here, are any other, any other of our public universities doing this?
I will say that the North Carolina Public School Forum did invest in this, these partnerships last year, and through that partnership and the work that was done there, there are eight partnership clusters across our state in which this great work is being done in different ways, and it looks different depending on, again, the context of those regions and such. But there are some really great things happening across our state with regards to triangulating the support from the local school system, the community college, and the local IH. And so it would be great to look into those eight. The NC Ed article that I believe came out, I'm going to say about a month ago, highlighted that work. They came back a year later and asked us for some data and said, "How has your pipeline made some progress in your region?" And so we sent in some numbers and some stories, and there was an article written. And so there are several programs highlighted in that article that are great to learn more about. And in a convening last spring in Chapel Hill, we were able to share about the programs and processes we had put in place, and it was a great day to elevate the work that's being done across the state. So there are seven other clusters that have done similar types of work across the state.
I just am so grateful that you all are paying attention to adult learners and adult learners' needs because they are very different than, you know, your average college sophomore who's thinking about maybe going into the profession. And I think traditional universities have typically had trouble cracking that nut and meeting the needs of those adults, and you all are clearly doing that so well. So congratulations, and thank you.
Ms. Kamnitz?
Just to follow up on that, and this is a question for Betsy, I think. What, as you, as you continue, all of you, to work on this program and learn more about what works and what doesn't work, what is the ultimate capacity for this to expand to other counties and community colleges, other LEAs and community colleges in the Northwest Region? Is that something that is, something you're working towards?
Absolutely. In fact, we meet four times a year with our superintendents through the Public School Partnership, and one of those four meetings is also inviting the presidents of our community colleges in this region. And so in partnership with Western Piedmont Community College, CVCC, Wilkes Community College, Surrey Community College, several, let's see, I'm thinking of who was in the room, Forsyth Tech, because we work in Winston-Salem where our lab school is as well, we have partnerships that are growing and discussions that are being had around the pipeline. And as you mentioned, considering the adult learners that we're now recruiting for our profession, we really want to make sure that we are aligned to what the community colleges are doing and understanding the needs. So I do think that those partnerships are there and growing, and each of the superintendents in the room that articulate with those other community colleges can also stand up here and tell you some wonderful ways in which they're engaging with their community colleges. and tell you some wonderful ways in which they're engaging with their community colleges. So we're very much embedded in that work as well and hoping to make sure that we are always in tune with what all of the folks in the pipeline are doing so that we can be of service to our community and our region.
It's wonderful work. And just out of curiosity, do you know, you said there were eight. Is there one in each of the eight regions, eight educational regions in the state by chance, or is it? Is it?
Unfortunately, I don't think all eight regions were represented in that room. Dr. Phipps, you might remember that day. I think there were more urban populations that were represented rather than going straight across the state. But there were some great things shared that day, and I'm happy to provide you with some follow-up information on that partnership.
If you could get it to Reuben, he could share it with the rest of us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just feel a need to say something.
It's your school.
There you go. But I just, you know, this partnership is what makes it happen. The leadership from the top. And Superintendent Truitt, you ask the right questions. We don't have all the information about what's happening at other IHEs and other areas necessarily, but this is a model that I will say is replicable.
Yes.
And it's scalable.
Yes.
And we can do it if we have the right people in the room starting the process and supporting it. Where do you get community college presidents, superintendents, and I'll say deans, in the room to do this important work on a regular basis? I have never experienced that until I did come up the mountain. And then I said, "We can't stay on the mountain." But, you know, but the fact is, having Don teach with us, oh, he does teach with us, too. I'll just say. Our MSA program, anyway, we've got deep roots here. But it's a trajectory of, you know, lineage. But the fact is, it doesn't happen everywhere. They're too modest maybe to say that in some ways, but I know it doesn't. But I know there are great things going on, and these are things that we can do. With the origin of the associate degrees, when they began, there was that, "Oh, my goodness, what will we do?", meaning the four years. We know what we can do, and we want to do that for individuals like our teacher assistants, those other employees who are in the district or in our communities that can be wonderful classroom teachers. So thank you, and thank you. These are amazing people behind me that we work with and also out here in this audience supporting us. So thank you.
Dr. Spooner, before you leave, just to pick up on the superintendent and my colleagues' questions, what do you need, the group, what do you need to expand this to every district in the Northwest Region?
Well, obviously, we'd have to do some math to think about budgetarily, you know, the resource need. So that would take important work because, as you heard what Caldwell County Schools does, that takes effort. So it would hinge on those dollar resources, the human capital, obviously, to be able to make this happen. But what we need is the openness of the ability to discuss these things, having the forums, having the space, the time, and the investment of our leaders, you, board members sharing the good work, asking us to be in places that we can share that and see the realities of what can happen. Because we can talk about it here, but it needs to spread through your words, through your actions, and through what we can do. And I won't speak necessarily for the individuals here in the room, but we will, we are more than happy and willing to be out there. And if we can, again, I heard Don talk about the $50,000 that he got to do some of that work, but if we can have the opportunity to put some things together, we can give you more specifics on that and be happy to do that.
We would love to partner with you and the superintendents and community college presidents in this area to accomplish it.
Okay.
Not just in this district, but let's start here.
Right, right.
And then figure out how to get it across the state in meaningful, impactful ways.
Because it didn't take a lot to get it started. I don't mean that that wasn't appreciated, the work, the funding that we got, but it was less than $5,000.
It's a coalition of the willing.
It is. And so it will take more to use that, but we will be your partner. Let me just state that right now. Right, gang? Okay, thank you. We will. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you to the presenters for that exciting partnership. Today, we're going to be talking about opportunities for advancement within the profession once someone makes the decision to become a teacher. We want our state's amazing teachers to be able to grow in their careers without having to leave the classroom. And so I've asked a few of our team at DPI to help out with updates on some models that you all should be familiar with. And so I'll ask Tom Tomberlin, Alex Granados, and Julie Pittman.
So my colleagues and I, is this on? Okay. My colleagues and I are happy to present some models that are being implemented across the state in relation to both teacher compensation and teacher recruitment. And the three models are advanced teaching roles, which we've discussed quite a bit, but I'm going to give you a brief overview of that program, as well as apprenticeship, and then what's the future state of licensure and compensation in the state of North Carolina.
Tom is very gracefully trying to buy me time. Give me a moment because I'm having some minute at issues.
I'm going to go ahead and apologize to Chair Davis because my map, I failed to color in Charlotte Mecklenburg, so my apologies when you get the feedback when you get back home.
It's a nice career you have.
While we're waiting, I do want to give the board some information regarding what you just heard about the teacher apprentice, not the teacher apprentice, the TA to Teachers Program. So we do offer, the state does have some state appropriations that provide reimbursements for the educational costs of these folks. And recent legislation has opened that up to all districts. It used to be it was confined to 38 districts across the state. So our office did a lot of work with the LEAs to get all the districts to report their need. We can report that it is woefully underfunded. We were not even able to support, fully support the, what we call the Tier One or the original groups. So we have sent to the General Assembly the projections for what the shortfall was. We had 575,000. We spent that really quickly. The projected need is around $2.5 to $3 million to support all the TAs, all 500 TAs that are actively trying to become teachers in the state of North Carolina. So we will continue to work with that and that funding. So advanced teaching roles, commonly referred to as ATR. It is technically Teacher Compensation and Advanced Teaching Roles Program in the state. And it is authorized by General Statute 115(c)(311) with some pretty critical updates in Session Law 2023-134, which was the most recent budget bill. And in that statute, it defines the purpose of the Advanced Teaching Roles Program. The State Board of Education shall establish a program to develop advanced teaching roles and organizational models that link teacher performance and professional growth to salary increases for classroom teachers in selected school administrative units. So the program is both around, about recognizing effective teachers and using those teachers to help grow other teachers professionally, as well as a differentiated compensation model based on performance. The purpose of ATR, the articulated purpose of ATR aligns with all three of the State Board of Education goals: eliminate opportunity gaps by 2027, improve school and district performance by 2027, and increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student by 2027. And I think that's what they call a hat-trick. The current state of ATR, so when we began this work back in 2017, the original investment from the General Assembly was 1.5 million, and that is for the grants that support the organizational shift from a traditional model to a more distributed leadership or teacher leadership model in the state. The, that funding has increased over that time to about $5.5 million recurring that we use to support ongoing programs as well as support or fund new programs coming into the model. Additionally, the most recent budget bill, Session Law 2023-134, provided for state-funded supplements for advanced teacher roles. So we have the adult leadership role. If they meet the criteria for that position, that comes with a $10,000 stipend supplement to the teacher. And the classroom excellence, where we ask highly effective teachers to take up to 20% more students than they normally would, and in compensation for that, they receive an extra $3,000 supplement. Currently, 25 LEAs are participating in the program at various stages of implementation. I can tell you, after the budget bill came out, I got several calls from charter schools asking if they were eligible to participate and/or when they could participate. As of right now, it is not open to charter schools, only LEAs. NCDPI has formed a strong partnership with our evaluation partner, Friday Institute, to measure the impacts of this. So we will constantly measure and report out to the board annually on the success of the program and get feedback on how we can answer other questions the board might have. Additionally, we're working with our partners at SAS EVOS to develop a EVOS measure for these adult leadership teachers. We want to know statistically and quantitatively if working with an adult leadership teacher makes our beginning teachers better teachers. And so that's an important part of the work that we're doing. Next, you can see the participating districts. Those that are in blue are what we're calling continuation districts, and you can see that the majority of them are in the continuation phase. A number of these, particularly those in Pilot One at the top there and Pilot Two, they end their continuation period at the end of the 24-25 school year. So we have, we have partners, external partners that work with us in communicating with the legislature. So both DPI and these external partners communicate with the legislature about the, what ATR needs to be successful. And one of the things that we're alerting the General Assembly to is, once these folks complete this second round of funding, they're not eligible for any of the flexibilities that are important for maintaining ATR. So we need to understand how they continue in the program. We want to keep all these folks in the program. We don't want anybody to age out of the program, but we need the General Assembly to signal to us how they maintain participation. And then you see you have the active programs, and then the pink are those that you just recently approved that are currently in their planning portion and will implement in the 24-25 school year. And I just laid these out on a map for you, so you can see the distribution. And of course, again, right between the pink and the green of, the green of Lincoln County and the, and the pink of Cabarrus, thank you, I left out Charlotte Mecklenburg, which should be blue. And what I want, I wanted you to visualize this because there are, we've got good representation, but if you'll notice, the Sand Hills region and the west, the far west and the northwest are very underrepresented in this model. So we want to do better communication to those areas to illustrate the benefits of the program and encourage them to apply in this next funding cycle. So the ATR model, it really is looking at this outdated model of leadership in our schools. So what we would call the OG model of schools is, there is the principal, and then everybody in that building reports directly to the principal or to the assistant principals. And this is really difficult, one, from a management perspective, two, from the perspective of growing these folks. It really is, all the organizational research tells us, it, once you get past 10 direct reports, eight to 10 direct reports, you're no longer growing anybody. You're not developing these folks. You are simply maintaining order in your department. And so the ATR model addresses this by deliberately identifying teacher leaders that can help with the instructional leadership of those teachers. And so now the principal becomes not the instructional leader of 50 teachers in the building, but he or she is the instructional leader of instructional leaders, the leader of instructional leaders. And that creates a situation where the principal can develop these leaders in the building, and those leaders are empowered to develop the employees that they're serving. There are specific criteria for the selection of these advanced readers. These are found in statute. And districts must choose at least two of these criteria in their selection processes. So we've got advanced certification, so it could be a national board certification. And the statute's very specific on a master's degree. It has to be a master's degree in a content area. So if you have a master's degree in science, but you can't have a general education master's degree or some unrelated master's degree to qualify for this. Rating of at least accomplished on each of the teacher standards in the NESA system, and no single rating below proficient. A three-year EVOS index growth of 1.5, which is a very big hurdle. That's still in the meets expected growth range, but it's still a very high value, and no individual year where your growth dipped below zero. And then demonstrated mastery of teaching skills is required by the local compensation model. So that's a really important one because each district is coming up with a system of measures that they're using to identify. And if you recall, a couple of months ago, we requested of the board the use of some ESER funds. And that is to study these local selection criteria for the advanced teaching roles so we can understand what are the measures that districts are using and which of those measures best help us identify an effective adult leadership teacher. So if we can do that, then we can be more informative to the districts to say, "These things really work. We know these work. We've tested them, and if you use these, you're likely going to have a much better, much more effective adult leadership teacher." So we appreciate the board granting us that grant, and we will be back to you to indicate the results of that, of that research study. So just some questions that the board can consider in regard to this. How can the state help expand the ATR program into those underrepresentative areas of the state? What are the implications, are there, for the principal role in ATR? So this is new. We have to assume that principals themselves will need some professional support in how you move to this distributed leadership model. How can the ATR model provide targeted support for beginning teachers? So we have the answer here to our mentoring problem. These advanced, these advanced leadership teachers, adult leadership teachers can serve in that capacity, and they're getting a reasonable supplement to do so, whereas we're not able to pay our mentors currently. And should our research findings indicate selection criteria are correlated with better outcomes, should the State Board should the state board standardize in part that selection criteria to ensure if we learn that certain things predict a better adult leadership teacher, should we start incorporating those into the selection process and standardize that in some way? And then that's where I will stop and I will hand it over to my colleague.
And so board members, advisors, superintendent, when we break out after lunch, this is one set of questions we're going to be dealing with. And then Mr. Granados and Ms. Pittman are going to bring others to us as they proceed. And we will hold questions until the very end.
So hello, everyone. I am Alex Granados, Policy and Research Advisor to the State Superintendent. And I'm going to talk to you about growth opportunities. But really what I'm talking to you about is the work that the State Board and DPI has done exploring the possibilities of licensure reform. So this is just, many of you probably remember, but back in the halcyon days of March 2023, the, I was still an education reporter and the State Board of Education voted to request a pilot of six years for licensure reform, what we were calling then pathways. And in the lead up to that, the Professional Educator Preparation and Standards Commission, I always have to look because I can't remember the whole thing. It's just Pepsi to me. They had worked for more than a year on licensure reform. And Rupert, if you'll go to the next slide. And they were working mainly off of this template. This is the pathways template. It is a tiered progression for teachers. It starts with the apprenticeship level at the bottom and ends at the top with what's called a master teacher. There are different requirements in between the levels. And at the bottom there, you can see the advanced teaching roles, which are kind of the opportunity for teachers to continue to stay in the classroom, but still advance. I'm going to talk a little about advanced teaching roles in this discussion because any, I think, exploration of licensure reform, advanced teaching roles are going to be essential. This is the actual request that the State Board put forward to the General Assembly. I just wanted to show here, it states the statement of need and it shows some of the reasons that you all thought we needed to do this. And I wanted to show it because all these things are still true today. The current licensure system is overly complicated, difficult for teachers to navigate. There's not sufficient flexibility. There are insufficient number of individuals entering into the teaching profession and on and on. And these problems all exist today. Licenseur, licensure reform is still as urgent as ever. If you move into the next one. So, you know, Pepsi had worked on this for about a year and a half. And I think by the time they brought it back to the State Board, it was clear that there were still some details to work out and some work that needed to be done. And so ultimately, what you all proposed to request from the General Assembly, it didn't, it didn't follow that chart in the initial template, but it had these specific things that you wanted to explore. A series of entry points and transition into the teaching profession, pathways for progressively advancing through the teaching profession, advanced teaching mentor and teacher leadership roles, that's your ATR roles, that are designed to support and improve classroom instruction and learning tools and structures that are designed or selected to support teachers through various levels of licensure. And they've, and then alternate methods to assess the competency of beginning teachers. And if you'll go to the next slide, that kind of leads into what I see as the biggest barrier to licensure reform. And this is something that I was thinking during the process and when I came onto DPI and started working on, on this. You know, this is, what we were working on back then was an entire licensure reform system that revolved around the idea of effectiveness. You needed to measure effectiveness to see what teachers could become teachers. You needed it to move between different licensure levels. And perhaps most importantly, you needed it to continue to renew your license and to get pay bumps. So this little picture here is from December 2022. And this was for license four teacher, which I believe was either the master teacher or the one right below it. But this was a requirement for licensure renewal and for a pay bump. And you'll see at the time, what had been determined was that they would need to demonstrate effectiveness of three to five years. And they could either use Evas or tools designed to measure impact on student learning, peer collegial review practice, or other reliable and valid quantitative or qualitative methods that have not yet been developed. And that not yet been developed was kind of the biggest hurdle that I saw because there was a lot of pushback from the teaching community because they didn't want an effectiveness-based licensure system to rely solely on Evas. That's one problem with Evas. The other problem with Evas is that it only targets a subset of teachers. There are many teachers that don't have Evas scores, so we have to have a different way of measuring their effectiveness. So, you know, the pilot, I, I went back and looked at what Pepsi ultimately recommended to the State Board and there were a list of things that could be used. But most of them were things that could be used to determine whether a person should become a teacher. Very few of them were about measuring the effectiveness of current teachers. And that one also had a, a bullet point saying, you know, measurement of effectiveness in ways that have not yet been determined. So one of the biggest barriers is effectiveness, effectiveness measures. And I think before successfully piloting a licensure reform model, there's going to have to at least be identification of effectiveness measures that can be used and tested. I don't think that going into a pilot, we can figure it out as we go along, to use a phrase that Craig Horn liked to use, that he quoted from Winston Churchill. So that's me quoting him quoting Churchill. You don't want to build the plane while you're flying it, right? And, and that's what it would amount to. So, you know, Tom mentioned earlier, these ESSER funds that we asked for to evaluate the evaluation criteria for advanced teaching role teach, teachers. Another aspect of that is that it is hoped in finding out which evaluation criteria are the best, that there might be a way to use those to backfill onto teachers who are not being considered for ATR roles and see if there are ways to measure their effectiveness using this evaluation criteria. So that is part of this study is to see if that's possible and to possibly identify measures that can be used to measure effectiveness in any eventual licensure reform model. So, you know, as Tom mentioned, that is going to take place over the next year and perhaps into the future, but hopefully we will have better ideas about that, you know, at the end of next year. So teacher support, you know, advanced teaching roles, in, in my opinion, in, in the opinion of many people, is, is the spearhead for any licensure reform system. It not only provides an opportunity for advancement for teachers, but it also bakes in support for early career teachers. So when Tom showed that model where there's a lead teacher who is over, you know, let's say seven teachers, you know, some subset of those teachers are going to be beginning teachers, but others aren't. And so that lead teacher is going to be able to provide support for the teachers in their group who need it most, when they need it most. So the beginning teachers might get the most attention. The more advanced teachers perhaps don't need as much support. But it bakes in that support in a way that, you know, the current teaching model doesn't necessarily. Yeah. Move to the next one. And so preliminary steps towards reform. As I mentioned, I think advanced teaching roles is essential. So fine tuning and growing the advanced teaching roles program, I think is going to be necessary if any licensure reform model is ever implemented and scaled. Identification of effectiveness measures other than Evas is going to be essential. And development of additional onramps to the classroom, which is going to lead to our next presenter. But I did just want to say, you know, I'm not advocating for any particular licensure model. The State Board asked for the pilot from the General Assembly. It was either during or right before the long session. And there was no progress on that. So it's still kind of limbo and there's still room to work on this. And I think as much as possible, work should be done on this before trying to move forward into actually implementing or piloting a licensure reform model. So some questions for discussion later. What possible measures of effectiveness should the state consider? There are other groups in the state who are thinking about this problem and are trying to find ways to pilot measures of effectiveness other than Evas in districts. So it's not just us. And I think there will be data coming out from a multitude of groups that can be considered. But it, it's important to think about, you know, what could those even possibly be? What additional barriers to licensure reform need to be considered? Licenseur reform is going to be complicated. And if and when it happens, it's going to be a difficult transition. And there are barriers that we probably haven't, haven't even thought about yet that we should start thinking about. What are the most important elements teachers, teachers need in a new licensure system? And what are the pitfalls of transitioning to a new licensure system? There are always going to be, you know, things that you know and, and what is it? Known unknowns. There, there are, there are pitfalls that we haven't even considered yet. And I think we need to be imaginative in considering those things so that we can get out, get out ahead of them. You know, one of the most important things in licensure reform is going to be buy-in. And as much as possible, we need to address the things that need to be addressed to make it easier for people to buy in. And in part, I think that's why the effectiveness measure piece is so important. And so I will pass it along to my colleague, Julie Pittman.
Well, I'm excited to bring the good news, some great news. So we're excited in North Carolina to be looking at how we can build teacher apprentices. Sorry, my allergies are killing me today. Well, go ahead and go to the next. So House Bill 259 gave us the opportunity to, to be able to begin to develop an apprenticeship program in North Carolina. However, the original provision to, it, it included TA to teachers and apprenticeships. The provisions there were written too narrowly. And so as of April 1st, zero people have qualified for that $1 million funding. And as Dr. Tomberlin said, we, we have an abundance of people who are trying to enter the TA to teacher program, so much so that we have more than double the need of what we have the funding for. So we have submitted a technical correction so that we can use the money for the apprenticeship work, because we have not built that yet, to be able to be used for the TA to teachers for this fiscal year. Otherwise, it'll revert at the end of June. So we should be able to address a good amount of the TA to teacher need, but not, not in full using that funding. And I think I spoke with Dr. Tomberlin this morning. We have, we have a, we have an external partner or an external colleague, group of colleagues who have identified two candidates who might qualify for the apprenticeship program, but we've not vetted them yet. So we'll be able to possibly do that before the end of the funding is up. So we've also submitted a separate provision to the General Assembly to allow us to create some more flexibility to create that teacher apprenticeship. So we'll talk a little bit about what that program would look like. And we know we've got several folks who are interested in developing apprenticeships. I know Dr. Reader and I have been talking about what she's wanting to do at her lab school. You heard from our Superintendent Phipps this morning, who talked about what, what he's wanting to do in his district. So we've got a lot of districts who are interested in apprenticeships. So we'll move to the next page. So the benefits for the state and district school systems to creating an apprenticeship program really fall in line with what your strategic plan is and what we're looking at through the superintendent's operation Polaris and really having that highly qualified, effective teacher in every classroom. So it allows for a well-prepared and diverse educator workforce, an expanded pool of individuals who are eligible to become teachers through increased access to affordable pathways, because it's a paid apprenticeship. Effective recruitment and retention of highly qualified educators. So it really does address that retention piece. When you pull people in as a fully quali, or as a fully funded, paid apprenticeship for a full year to work under a highly qualified teacher, then they're getting that one-on-one support every single day and getting paid to do it. And then there's incentive-embraided funding streams for the program development and implementation, which can alleviate some of the financial burden on the districts. The next slide. Okay. Benefits for perspective. Educators are clear pathways to educator credentials and licenses because you're, you're learning while you earn. So you're in the classroom learning. And we know, I know Dr. Reader and Dr. Spooner and several other folks, when we were working on pathways work, really understand that our best, our, our teachers who are staying in the classroom and are effective early in their career are those who have had that clinical experience. And so this gives them a longer runway on that clinical experience and allows them to really dig in and understand what teaching is all about. It gives long-term mentorship beyond the student teaching experience because the, the apprenticeship can encompass the, the student teaching experience. And then a high-quality new teacher induction and job-embedded professional development because they're having all of that professional development happen in a classroom, in a school, with highly qualified teachers and with highly qualified administrators as well, who are supporting them long-term. And then benefits for, yep. Benefits for educator prep programs are effective strategy to recruit and support diverse students because you're, you're more than likely recruiting folks who are already in the districts where they're going to be doing the apprenticeships. But, and you're able to meet them where they are rather than bring them where you are. To streamline partnerships with state and district educational agencies. A long-term dream that I've had is to make sure that we have really robust partnerships between our IHEs and our community colleges and the districts and that our student, our future teachers see our IHEs and our community colleges on the campus where they could come back and teach so that they know that there is long-term support there. And then opportunities to re-envision educator preparation. So in Florida, the legislation that came in Florida for their teacher apprenticeship went to, the funding went to the universities, so the EPPs. And the, the, the impetus behind that from their, from their General Assembly was to push the EPPs to reimagine what educator prep would look like so that the students were getting their educator prep in the classroom with very, in the classroom where they're teaching, rather than in the classroom where they're students. And that just makes for a long, it's just benefits all around. So next slide, please. So we are working at the department with the Educator Registered Apprenticeship Intermediary, which is RTI. And they are, they have been for the last six weeks or so, meeting with us individually and not individually to try to help support us in thinking about how we might be able to create this apprenticeship program. And they have funding from the USDOL to be able to help provide technical assistance to state and LEAs who are wanting to create their, their own registered apprenticeship programs. And we're going to launch that very quickly because we've been asked to do so by the General Assembly. So in North Carolina, we have a, we have registered a team that is going to start today. Our first meeting is at 2:00 today. So some of us will be on that meeting and others of us will have to get caught up a little bit on that for a state leadership academy. This academy is a cohort of, I believe it's seven states and the territory of Guam, who are in the process of developing their own teacher apprenticeship programs. And we'll be able to work over three cohort meetings and then some office hours with our team lead. And our coach is Olivia Rice at RTI. I think many people know her and her work. And our team is going to consider local contacts and policies as well as develop a plan so that DPI can develop the guardrails so that districts can then develop their own registered apprenticeships. And then hopefully also at the same time, register their own future, future teacher apprenticeships. So we'll be able to loop in some student apprenticeships as well. Our team consists of Alex and myself. We've got some folks from Tom's team in licensure who are helping us look at how we're going to do this through like, as far as how we're able to adjust it with our licensure demands. We also have Dr. Reader, who is our, our EPP rep for the, for the state. You heard Superintendent Phipps say that he is on our team. And we also have somebody with apprentice.org in the community college, I believe. Is that everyone? I think that's right. Yeah. So we've got a really, and, and the purpose of this is we had to have a cross-section of folks who are on our team, who are going to be helping develop this. And we're doing this in concert and cooperation with Dr. Tomberlin and Dr. Jordan because ultimately it will live in the licensure shop. Okay. And then we'll be able to have teams from districts who will be able to, in the fall, begin to register for the grant for this and go ahead and start building out their own programs in the fall. And we'll do an accelerator. This team will then expand into an accelerator for any districts under the tutelage of RTI for any districts who want to develop that. And we'll do that, I think, in August or September. So looking forward to that. And then, I think, next slide. Yep. Oh, questions for discussion. So I think this is, I think this particular way of looking at teacher prep and teacher apprenticeships can really be a, a apprenticeships can really be a, a board that we can leap off of to really address some of the effectiveness measures that you've heard my colleagues talk about in their questions. So how will teacher apprenticeship program address the pipeline issues? Obviously, teacher apprenticeships were part of the pathways model to begin with, so we're looking at how we can develop that and, and pay our apprentices, and begin to really build out this first step of a really long-term goal of addressing teacher licensure. What impact will this have on the way we prepare teachers? Which is why we're glad to have community college and, and EPPs as a part of this team. How will this help support beginning teachers? I think the, the proof's in the pudding on that, because those beginning teachers are going to be with highly qualified teachers, not just having someone check in on them during their planning period or lunch or over a phone call. They'll actually be checking in on them every single day throughout, and holding their hand and walking alongside them the whole time. How could this help students have greater access to highly qualified teachers? So you're not just getting that emergency licensed teacher who's coming in or a long-term sub in a classroom. You're actually going to be able to have teacher apprentices who are getting that day-to-day support and be able to have greater access to the highly qualified teachers. How could this help study and develop measures of effectiveness, as I said? And how could this grow district-regional partnerships with EPPs and community colleges? I'm really looking forward to the discussion later this afternoon. And I think, I think we're open for questions now from the board. Either any of my colleagues can answer.
Questions from my colleagues? Ms. Camnitz.
Julie, remind me, in the original imaginings of what the, an apprenticeship-level license might look like, I believe we were talking about both, for example, TAs who were coming in and would serve as apprentices. But we also talked about transitioning sort of from the student, student teaching model into an apprenticeship model. Is that still part of what could come out of this?
Absolutely. I think that's what we're going to be looking at over the next month and a half, where we're in our state leadership academy group, and how we can possibly have that folded into the apprenticeship program, so that the student teaching becomes part of and not something that's separate. And I think also, it, it wouldn't have to necessarily be just TA to teachers, right? I think Tom and I have talked a lot about hopefully having this, in the long-term, possibly take the place of a license to teacher emergency license. So it becomes, it becomes the new license of those folks.
So it would be part of the residency process?
Yes. And they'll be, yes, they'll be able to get their, their schooling and, and all of their credential work that they need to have done through the EPP while they're working. And I know that Dr. Reader and I have talked about how she envisions this at the lab school, that those teacher, those future teachers or student teachers are working in the lab school with their teachers and their professors in the lab school every day. So the delivery of that work is happening while they're in the school building and while they're working as a teacher apprentice.
And another piece of this, I think, with the student-teacher model that we've talked about long ago, is that we have to recognize that for a lot of students, their period of time when they are in the classroom student teaching is a big problem financially.
Yeah.
And so that's part of what this would also solve.
Absolutely. Yeah. Alex.
So part, part of the information that we sent to the General, sent to the General Assembly was a request that for those participating in the apprenticeship program, that would serve in lieu of student teaching. So if they're going through the ed prep program, that would satisfy that requirement.
They have to be aligned with the ed prep.
Yes, and they'll have to be aligned with an ed prep program. And the other thing I was going to say in terms of, you know, who this is for, at, at the moment, it's focused on TAs, just because the amount of money that's available isn't enough to pay both tuition and salary. So we're focusing on TA, since they're already going to have a salary, and that money can be used for tuition. But the hopes are that in the future, we can expand that budget, so that it can include more than just TAs.
I forgot to also add that Leah Sutton from Bestin C is on our team for the state.
Other comments, questions? Thank you.
And so all of these models are a departure from what Tom calls the OG model, the one teacher, one classroom. And we're going to come back and look at these three slides of discussion after lunch. But before that, before we take lunch, I thought it would be good to double-click on something that the superintendent brought to us, I believe, last month in her report, which is also a departure and forward-looking. And that is that idea of strategic staffing, that she went out and visited at Arizona State. Ms. Moore told us about her involvement as well. And it's being implemented here at App State's two lab schools. I know that the superintendent, Ms. Camnitz, and some others are going to be visiting next week, I believe, but they're here now to, to tell us about that. Dr. Reader?
So while they're continuing to set up, I'll just say, the apprenticeship option, we are very excited about. And you heard earlier about the pipeline with the community college, us at App State, and then a local school district. So think about our lab school that's in Winston-Salem. We want to work, and we've already started conversations with Forsyth Tech. We'd like to bring Guilford Tech into that, Davidson-Davy, any of those community colleges that are nearby. As those students graduate from the associates and teacher prep program, they can stay where they are, where they live, come to our lab school in Winston-Salem. We become the EPP and the public school. And they do their apprenticeship there. They get to get a degree from App State and never leave home. And then go into their local communities to teach. So Julie, thank you. We're very excited to partner and make that a reality. Okay, you all ready? Okay. All right. Good morning. If we haven't had the opportunity to meet, I'm Dr. Hannah Reader. I am the Assistant Dean and the Director of Lab Schools for the Wright College of Education here at App State. Last month, Superintendent Truitt and her team shared with you about their visit to Mesa, Arizona, to see strategic staffing models in action. She started her update with three assumptions, and I want to remind you of those. First, all learners are identical. Spoiler alert, they're not. Second, EPPs must prepare future teachers for one-teacher, one-classroom models. Spoiler alert, we're setting out to change that trajectory at App State. Third, beginning teachers have the same expectations as teachers with 20-plus years of experience. Spoiler alert, this is bad practice. And fourth, students do not have regular access to the adults they need. Spoiler alert, it doesn't have to be this way. I want to reiterate Superintendent Truitt's words from last month, and I quote, "We are asking teachers to do the impossible." She's right. And to be frank, it's absolutely absurd. Last year, I challenged our App State lab schools to consider how we are different from other schools across the state. We are, after all, lab schools. We should be different. We should be implementing innovative, evidence-based strategies in our schools. If they work, great. Let's scale and replicate them. If they don't work, let's try something different. That's how laboratories work. Our team started this process by identifying the problems that need solutions. We decided to focus on things that we can change, not those that we can't. Quickly, things like isolation, burnout, poor working conditions, teacher job satisfaction, those things made the list. Then we started talking about how teachers have to be unicorns. They have to be everything to everybody. But we know that unicorns do not exist. So why do we place so many unrealistic expectations on teachers? Then we started talking about student outcomes and how we need to meet the needs of the whole child. It's easy to say we're doing that, but are we really? From there, we started considering solutions. Quickly, we realized that we needed to reimagine what school looked like. Also, we knew that if we started with re-imagining the role of teachers, then there would be a direct impact on student outcomes. I started researching innovative school models and stumbled upon the work of Brent Madden and his team at the Next Education Workforce out of Arizona State University, or the other ASU. Actually, all of our work we talk about is ASU squared, so. I devoured all of the free resources they had on their website, and then oddly enough, found myself in the same room as Brent, as part of a small convening that we were both invited to participate in, in Minneapolis last year. From that point on, I was convinced that Brent's strategic staffing model was the answer. Then exactly one year ago this week, I took a team of Arizona, those of us right here, to do the same school tours that Superintendent Truitt and her team just recently did. With our teachers at the forefront of this work, our lab schools worked tirelessly last year to develop our innovative model. This past August, I am proud to say that the App State lab schools officially moved away from the one-teacher, one-classroom model. Using workforce design principles, we restructured the roles of teachers, and we moved to a team-based co-teaching model. We also implemented a four-day instructional week. If we're going to ask teachers to co-teach, we have to give them time to co-plan. Every Friday is now an enrichment day for students. Yes, they still come to school. And they still receive academic instruction. It just looks different. This provides our teachers the time they need to be the professionals that they are. I'm now going to turn it over to our principals of both of our lab schools to provide you with an overview of our innovative model. Dr. Amy Snow is the principal of the App State Academy at Middle Fork in Winston-Salem. And Ms. Emma Hatfield-Sidden is the principal of the App State Academy at Elkin, located in Elkin.
Good morning. We are really excited to be here with you today and to share all of the work that we have done together to move our schools and our students forward. So first, we're going to start with what we did with our staff. So we strategically changed what teacher roles look like. So our certified teacher positions, we restructured those roles, changing up their roles and their, their duties and responsibilities, so that students could get the support that they need, and teachers could get the support that they need to do their job well. We've started to think about the expertise of each teacher and how to distribute that expertise amongst grade level spans. So we have a kindergarten, first grade, grade level span, a second and third grade level span, and a four, five grade level span. In that span, those teachers share about 100 students. They share the growth of those students. They share focusing on the needs of each of those students, because they are an instructional team. And that has made an incredible difference in the work we do. We've also brought in a teacher support coach, who's supporting our beginning teachers as they're trying to navigate how to maintain and support a classroom of students. Well, now those beginning teachers do that alongside veteran teachers, who can support them and give them what they need to be successful. And then we also have spent time really thinking about how to support the teacher leads that we have at those grade spans, to build their leadership potential, so they are instructional leaders in our school.
Okay, next slide. All right. So let's take a deeper look at what a grade span looks like. So I was so excited to hear the information that was previously shared about advanced teacher roles, because that is what's happening at lab schools. So you'll see on this left-hand side, the curriculum coach. That's the lead for the grade span. That's that advanced teacher role. So job responsibilities could include, or does include, leading this grade span, supporting teachers, real-time support. So they are, they have teaching responsibilities. So there are teachers on this team, but they're also the lead. So they're in classrooms. They are providing instruction to students, but also observing the, the teachers on their span and providing feedback, immediate feedback, that we know is critical to improve instruction. A curriculum coach about the administrative responsibilities, that is also such a critical part, because, you know, teachers aren't unicorns, but neither are administrators. So the support is needed on that level as well. So this role has been a game changer for many reasons within the school building. But again, the advanced teacher role is critical. We're doing that at our lab schools. So this-
Can I add in one thing? Lab schools are also not eligible for the advanced teacher role grants, so we would like to advocate that that be changed.
We need that. We're doing it, right? We need that. This top row you'll see are our certified staff members. So those are our, our teachers. So we have four teachers per grade span with an interventionist. Again, critical to ensure that we are providing effective instruction. This team right here, the top row of team, they really do work together to co-plan, and we'll talk more about what that really looks like in a minute. Below that, you'll see that we have one tutor and one teacher assistant, as well as a student teacher. We could have more student teachers, just depending on that semester. But again, when we're looking at how school can be organized and what it looks like, we really include, from day one, our student teachers, our teacher assistants, tutors, they are a critical part of this model. On the right-hand side, you'll see our exceptional children's teacher, as well as our multilingual teacher. So these staff members really do support our students that receive special education services, as well as our students whose language, first language is not English. So critical in order to provide the whole team of students the support that they need as well. So just like Dr. Snow had mentioned, we have about 100 students per grade span, which equates to about nine adults, or one adult per nine students. So we're looking more at that adult-to-student ratio as a pair to, as opposed to that one classroom, one teacher model, where you're one teacher having to provide everything, right, to those 30 kids or so.
And one thing I just thought about while Ms. Sidden was talking to you, the six certified positions that we have restructured, we already had those positions. We've just changed their roles and responsibilities. We didn't add more teachers. We used what we had, but we restructured what that work looks like.
And I think that is something to note, because multiple people will ask us, so did you add positions? We absolutely did not. We looked at how we could reallocate the positions we currently have. We did add some grant-funded positions with some tutors, but that's not included right here. So again, what staff do you have, and how can you best use that, those staff members? So that's really the work that we did the summer and then implemented this year.
So alongside having a strategic staffing model, we also implement co-teaching practices. So our teachers had training beginning, actually, late last spring and into the summer, on how to co-teach, co-plan, co-assess, co-reflect, all together. And that is hard, but very good work. And so these are examples of some of the types of co-teaching models that our teachers have been trained in. We're going to focus on a couple with you briefly, that we have been using most often and that we're pushing ourselves to use more often. So the alternative teaching model, which you see is that fourth model, that's what we use when we're really trying to personalize learning for our students. Our teachers have significant time that we've built into their work week to analyze data and to plan together. Because if teachers are professionals, they need the professional time to do that work. And so as they're doing that, they're grouping students strategically as well. Who needs what? Who can best give those students what they need? And let's make sure we put those people in the right places. So that's one of the models that we see a lot. We also are pushing hard towards our co-tea, our teaming, co-teaching model. So in a teaming model, there's two teachers, maybe more, in one space with a larger group of students. They're teaching a lesson together. They're bouncing ideas off of one another. When a beginning teacher is first starting out and they're standing in front of a classroom by themselves, it is scary. It's been a long time since my first day, but kindergartners in front of you, it's not an easy thing to do. But now, we have something in practice where our beginning teachers can co-teach alongside a veteran teacher. They're seeing that teacher model, classroom management strategies, questioning strategies. They're helping to look at how that teacher is engaging students, and they have someone right there to do that with them. So it's pretty amazing to see that work happen. We're moving more and more towards that, but it does take continued trust in one another. And they've done, our teachers have done a beautiful job building that throughout the year.
And just one more thing. I think we often, when you think of co-teaching, you think of special education teacher going in and pushing into that regular education classroom. And that is happening. However, it is happening with our regular education teachers. They are teaming, and they are providing this together. And that just has been such a game changer and really impactful with the kind of instruction that we can really deliver to students.
Okay. So Monday through Thursday, we have what could be considered a typical master schedule. We have, however, protected these instructional blocks. Monday through Thursday, instruction is not interrupted by other activities and events. We are focusing hard on making sure students are getting what they need throughout the, the content areas. We have a morning meeting block, where students are meeting as a team. They're building some relationships with, with one another, talking about- They're building some relationships with one another, talking about community-building activities so that they can work together effectively. Our literacy block is two hours, and so teachers have time to focus on all the important items in that science of reading work that we're doing so that every student is getting what they need throughout that literacy block. We have an hour and a half for math where, again, our teachers are working to team teach and differentiate instruction to support students in their math development. And then we have learning lab. So learning lab for us is our science and social studies content time. But what's really special about that time is our teachers are co-planning science and social studies. They're thinking about how to work together to implement science and social studies lessons together. But our general education teachers are joined during that time by our specialists. So our music teacher, our STEM teacher, our PE teacher, our media coordinator, and our art teacher are co-teaching science and social studies content alongside our general education teachers. What they do is they're bringing their specialty to the content. So on Fridays, which Ms. Sidden's going to speak about in just a moment, our specialists are able to co-plan with our grade level spans so that they can together come up with really engaging, interactive instructional units around the science and social studies content. Our specialists, for the first time, feel like they are truly connected to our school community because they get to spend time with our teachers in planning and with our teachers as they teach. They're the happiest that they've been in a really long time. And then we have school-wide recess. School-wide recess is pretty amazing. It's something that we saw when we went to Minneapolis and did some tours of schools. Everyone comes outside at the same time. Everyone goes to different zones as they choose in the mornings where they're going to go, and students are playing together kindergarten through fifth grade. The zones are a mixture of students. Our fourth and fifth graders are learning how to provide leadership skills to those children in their different zones, and kids are playing outside and really having a good time. So it's been, it's been a long journey, but it's another important piece of the work we do.
Okay, so Friday is our enrichment day. What does that look like for students and what does that look like for our teachers? So for teachers, that looks like co-planning. So in order to co-teach, you are going to have that, you need the time to co-plan together. So our teachers spend all day. Our teachers do not, they see our students, obviously, but they do not have a teaching responsibility on Friday. It is co-planning. We also engage in very, very deep data dives on Friday. It's critical in order for us to know what we need to do next is to analyze that data. The feedback our teachers say is, I've never looked at data in this way, because we are really, really taking the time to do that. And guess what? Data is not scary anymore to our staff. Data is what we use to make sure that we, as the instructional leaders in our school, that we're doing what we need to make sure our kids are growing. So it also looks like lesson rehearsals, just like, you know, we're doing this presentation to you, we had to rehearse. Our teachers have to rehearse together when they're instructing and they're co-teaching because they want to make sure that they have it right as well. So that happens on Fridays. So professional learning, we really, really try to be aware of our staff's time, and this model allows staff to be able to go home in the evenings and not take all of their work with them, or have professional learning that occurs after school. So that occurs during our Friday as well. So feedback from teachers too, this model, which you'll hear a little bit about from them, has really changed, you know, what they're able to do as a professional, because they are leaders and professionals and need the time to do their work. They have it with us on Fridays. So what does enrichment day look like for students? So Friday is different. We're lab schools, right? We want it to look different. It is not less. So students are not receiving any type of less instruction on Friday. They're not playing, you know, all day Friday. They are engaged in very high-level work. So that can look like interventions and tutoring programs. On Friday, we have two great tutoring programs at both lab schools, as well as time for, what do students need? What do you specifically need? We're going to give that to you all throughout the week, but especially on Friday. So personalized learning. We have really engaged in that this year and added exploration-based learning to that. Why do you want to be at school? What makes it fun? What do you want to learn as a student? We're really drawing on our students' curiosities into learning to make school a place where you want to be, and so you'll learn and engage. Clubs. Talk about student engagement and the opportunity to have choice. In clubs, each Friday, our students love it. We had visitors last week, and we had some students that came to talk about what they loved. They brought up clubs. They get to choose what they're excited about. Clubs happen on Fridays, and our teachers do lead clubs on Fridays. We also take time on Friday to engage with our university and community partners to provide special programming. So if you check out our social media, you will see all of the amazing things that happen throughout the week, but especially on Fridays. We really, really leverage that and lean into our community and university partners. So that's a little bit of what Friday looks like, but it is truly an enrichment day for both students and staff.
Okay, so now we want to introduce you to the real experts in the room, our educators. So I'm going to ask each of you if you'll just quickly introduce yourselves, so your name, where you teach, and what your role is.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Smith, and I'm the four, five curriculum coach.
Amber Phillips, I teach at the Academy at Elkin as an interventionist.
I'm Joy Hickman. I'm a two, three teacher. I teach third grade mostly.
I'm Caitlin Marshall, and I'm a fourth and fifth grade teacher.
Okay, so I'm going to ask them a few questions so that you can hear directly from them. How has this innovative model changed your teaching or renewed your joy in teaching?
I'll go first on this one. I am, I love to learn, and this model has provided me the opportunity to work with experienced professionals and learn beside them. We have a shared mission, we have a shared vision, and we are constantly working together to get there, and that allows me the opportunity to learn. My first-year teaching was closer to a one-teacher, one-classroom model, and I was desperate for immediate feedback on a lesson, for modeling on a lesson. I wanted to know, how can I reach my students better? And this model has absolutely provided that for me. Dr. Snow was talking about the one-teach-one-observe. I get to watch an experienced teacher on the first day of a lesson and support, but learn, how do you truly reach these students? How do you truly deliver that content in a way that is effective? And then I get my opportunity to teach alongside and get that immediate feedback. Have you considered phrasing it this way? That word's not really working, it's confusing. Try this. And it's been brilliant, it's been amazing, and I feel that I have grown so much, and I feel so capable as a second-year teacher.
And Ms. Hickman, what year are you?
Second. This is my second year.
And an App State grad. We'll just add that.
I would like to speak to this question as well. So as an educator with over a decade of experience, two years ago, I was prepared, I wouldn't say ready, but I was prepared to resign from education because as a mom of two lively souls, I, the expectations did feel overwhelming. The lab school has truly renewed not only my joy for teaching, but my hope for the future of education. This model completely transformed the way that I approach teaching. It's expanded my toolkit, and it provided me with access to a vast array of resources, different examples of teaching, and different teaching materials. I can, I feel like I can truly tailor lessons to individual student needs and meet their needs more effectively. It renewed my joy because I feel like I can be creative. It really fostered my own creativity and experimentation in the classroom. It opened up avenues for collaboration with other educators, other experts, and it allowed me to still continuously refine my own education teaching, or my teaching practices. This innovative model's not only enhanced the quality of education that I am able to provide to students, but it's also reignited my passion for teaching because it offers endless possibilities for innovation and growth.
Thank you. So in my opening, I mentioned issues like isolation and burnout. How have you seen this model become a solution to these problems?
So I'm a third-year teacher, and my first year at the lab school was last year, so my second year, and I really struggled with finding balance between school, my home life, and deciding if I was ready to go back to college to pursue further education. Well, I really debated if teaching was for me during that year. I struggled with knowing what my purpose was. I would spend countless hours at home doing work, and I still just felt like I was digging and digging and digging and not getting anywhere with my students. And I will have to say, since launching this model, I have found this new sense of passion. I am ready to go back to school to further my education, to support my students. I have the time to look at data and analyze it, interpret it, decide what are the next best steps for our students. And I can use my curriculum coach to help me when I have questions in determining what those next best steps are. So that, to me, is just very powerful, and it has reignited this passion for teaching for me.
I think that this model is, like, collaboration is essential for this model. So jokingly, when we started as a school, we were all new faces. We were new, and some of us didn't even like each other. But through this model, we were forced to collaborate with each other, and we grew not only in our appreciation for each other and the differences that we shared, but we also grew as a community within our school, and it truly feels like home away from home. I want to cry when I say that because it's so, that comes from the heart.
As a curriculum coach, I love this model because it has helped, like, when you've been in education for a while, this is my ninth year, and I knew that I wanted to keep growing, and this model pushes you. It pushes you to go get your masters, go get your doctorate, go get your national boards. And for me, I knew I wanted to make the next step. I wanted to be in a leadership role, and this model provided that opportunity to keep going and not settle for just the classroom. And this model has done, like, the advanced teacher roles that you were talking about, and then now moving into that curriculum coach, I'm seeing myself grow as a leader and also helping people that are on my team or other people that are on other grade spans, them grow as a leader too. And you can see the voices of teachers being empowered, and if you empower teachers, then you empower students.
What impacts on student learning have you seen so far, and what makes you think that this model is actually working?
Okay, I'll go first, I guess. So as a grade span, we really focus on what they were saying. We focus on data. And in the past, data just kind of, it sat there. You didn't have that space, you didn't have that time, you didn't even know how to really go about it, what are protocols that you should follow. And this model has pushed us to have that space, especially on Fridays and on Mondays when we're talking about our micro goals and just different time during planning to actually look at data. We look at formal assessments, we look at informal assessments, just conversations with each other and able to actually look at the data in reading, in math, learning lab, whatever it might be. And as a team, within that grade span, like they showed, we make those decisions together. And because of that, it's now become not just the homeroom teacher's data, just those kids are for that teacher. Instead, we've taken it all together, and now our kids are our kids, not that teacher's kids. So now we're sharing our kids with each other, and that data is now on all of us, and that provides that teacher efficacy and works on teacher voice. And so when we look at that data every Friday and every Monday, we make next steps. And because of that, we are intentional, we use each other's strengths so that we can support one another, how do we go forward? And we start making those next steps, and then we start actually doing it, like, even the next hour or the next day. And I think that's powerful because that's, this model is focused on being teacher-centered, and when you do that too, then it becomes student-centered, and now we're actually impacting students. And I think Ms. Marshall's going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the impact that this has on students too. The confidence in our students have flourished this year. They are participating in discussion, they are leading discussion, they are asking the questions that they didn't know were possible to ask before. They see themselves the way that we see them. They see potential, they see a future. And I think that is just absolutely phenomenal when you're looking at this model because most of our students come from places that are not the best, and you can't expect students to learn coming from that environment. So with this model, we're able to meet students where they're at. I can have my curriculum coach cover my class while I'm handling a situation with my student who is socially and emotionally not ready to enter my classroom. So that way, when they do enter the classroom, they are truly ready to learn, and they are the best that they can be in bringing the best that they can.
Recently, at the Academy at Elkin, we had a student who took a pre-test on fractions, and when Ms. Sidden saw her in the hallway, she said, how, how do you think that went? She was like, oh, I just feel so small in math. And after that post-test, Ms. Sidden saw her in the hallway, and she said, how did you feel? She said, I feel so big in math.
And I think too, the determination of our students. Our students, we talk so much about data and growing, that our students are hungry to learn more. They're like, what can I do to do better? How can I get this grade up? How can I bring my scores to where it's showing I'm green instead of yellow now? They are wanting to see that growth in themselves as well, and they're determined to do that no matter what it takes.
And we've seen, like, specifically, I know, you know who I'm talking about, but we have a student who usually, what would happen in a traditional setting, they would just go up to that teacher and share their positive and share their growth. But we've seen students constantly going to everybody on the team and saying, this is what I got today, this is what I did in learning lab, this is what I made on my reading assessment, or I got this accomplished. And I think that's just so valuable, and I've never seen that before, that they're going to individual teachers across the team. And I think that goes back to this model, shows kids us collaborating and how that can be done as a student too.
Has implementing this model been easy?
So I know one of the biggest challenges, I've heard from my colleagues, I've heard this reported from colleagues for some people, is that it's kind of moving from that, these are my students, to these are our students. Part of being a teacher is you fiercely love the children you serve and you want to protect them, and so trusting that when they go into someone else's classroom, they're getting what they need. It went from, this is my data, I'm in charge of that data, I'm in charge of this student and these students and making sure that they're successful, to, we are in charge of these students, this is our data. So I think a challenge for a lot of us was going from I and mine to ours and we.
So to be transparent, when our team first heard about Fridays, we were like, okay, let me just put my feet up. And Fridays, we feel like we leave so exhausted after planning and looking at that data. It is certainly not a day where we put our feet up, but it is a day where we put our feet to the floor and run and spend that time so strategically looking at that data. So just to speak on that, because I think when a lot of us first heard about that, we were unsure what that would look like.
It was hard work, but everything's been worth it. We call it growing pains.
What advice would you give to schools that want to move away from the one-teacher, one-classroom model?
My advice would be to recognize that growth is not always linear, that you have to fail multiple times in order to see that growth, and that you really have to put forth an effort that feels uneasy, but in the end, it's going to be worth it. And it might not show the first year, and it might not show the second year, but it is working, and you have to take baby steps to get there.
And going off the baby steps, like, this model didn't just happen this year. We were blessed to actually put some of this into play the year before. And so my advice would be, take the small steps. You have to start small because teacher buy-in is so important. If you don't have teacher buy-in, it's not going to get to the end goal that you want. And so for us, myself was a teacher leader, and then another colleague who was a curriculum coach for two, three, was a teacher leader. And we started within our grades, within our grade last year with third grade, and Ms. Hickman was on that team too. And me and him got to actually co-teach together. We had a classroom with two teachers. And because of that, we felt empowered. We looked at the pros and cons of what that was like versus a traditional classroom. And there were so many pros that me and him started talking, we were like, this feels like the most empowered year. And I know I keep saying that word, but I felt true joy, and it had came from, like, very hard years, but we got to experience together, we got to go through the trenches together. And what ended up happening is we started sharing that, and that actually spread into our third grade space. And so we had a beginning teacher at the time, first year, and then we had another teacher that was like, I don't know, maybe year three or four. And they were running as more of a traditional. And so we were hearing some of the things that they were saying, like, they were struggling, this is what they wanted. And so we started talking about it as a team, and they started kind of buying in, then it spread across our actual grade. And so me and the teacher, the other teacher leader, we spread ourselves out and split up, then we had two teachers in each room. Then what ended up happening, word got across, fifth grade then started trying to do some of the similar things and trying new things. And you could tell that that buy-in was starting to spread, which made this work this coming, this year, a lot easier because you already had that mindset coming into play, and people were seeing the good things that were coming out of it.
I was the first-year teacher on that grade level, and watching it happen and hearing about it, I was like, it's my turn, I need, I'm hungry for that, I want to see that play out, I want to see you teach, I want to see other people teach, like, let's make this happen, let's figure this out. It was really exciting.
I would say to prepare for the discomfort of trying something new and making mistakes, but also preparing for the magic that happens when your students are receiving that more personalized educational experience.
I think it goes without saying how incredibly proud of these educators that I am, so thank you, ladies, we are so grateful. They have worked extremely They have worked extremely hard to do what is best for teachers and students. As they said, this work has not been easy, and we have a lot of work moving forward to continue to do to implement the model to fidelity. But we're not stopping there. My vision is to open a Center for Reimagining Education. Part of the Lab School Initiative is to scale and replicate innovative, evidence-based practices. And that's exactly what this center is going to do. We're going to help other schools and districts move away from the one-teacher, one-classroom model. We're also in discussions with Arizona State University to become a regional hub to advance the work of their next education workforce. Educators shouldn't have to travel to Arizona to see this model in action. It's already happening right here in North Carolina, and Superintendent Truitt and her team is coming on Monday to see it in action. The Center for Reimagining Education will also be a place where we reimagine educator preparation. If this is the future of schools, then we have to change how we prepare future teachers. At App State, we are committed to changing the trajectory of educators and students alike, and we hope you'll join us on this mission. And at this point, we will open the floor to any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Blackburn.
I'd be interested, I've got a little bit of knowledge of this. So I'd love for you to share with, maybe the principals or the teachers, share with the impact that what you're doing has had on the communities you're in. Because I know the socioeconomic communities you're in, so I think our fellow, my fellow board members and the audience would be interested in the impact that your schools are having on the communities that we exist in.
I would love to talk about that. So we definitely feel, and when you come visit, I hope, I think that you will see this because we get this often, our schools just feel different. They are different. They're supposed to feel different. But one big part of that is that, is the, our families, the way that we serve them, the way that we deal with each other, the way we deal with students, doesn't stop there. It's the way we handle our families and partner with them as well. So, and our community. I mean, like, Elkin is centrally located to right there in downtown. So we're fortunate to be able to really participate with our community members to really provide students really more than just that. Like, we talked about that one-classroom, one-teacher model, but classroom, you know, and learning can occur everywhere. So we've really leaned into that this year and last year at Elkin. And our community has really loved being a part of school in a different way, too. You know, you come in for maybe, you know, one day a year for, you know, our, our community partners are with us once a month. So it's, or more. So it's really impacted their ability to be a part of school in a different way, for sure. And our families have enjoyed that as well.
Yeah, I can add a little more. We are in Walkertown, which is right outside of Winston-Salem, just a few minutes from downtown Winston-Salem. And our children do come with lots of different needs, and so do our families. But they also come with pretty amazing brains that learn and think and grow like every other child in North Carolina. And so what I see in our children is I feel like they value themselves in very different ways. They feel that they matter. They know that they're teachers and the staff at their school, actually at both schools, at Elkin, too. The children in both of those places feel heard, feel like they can grow, and that they can have success at school. Some of our, many of our children at both schools, school hasn't always been a successful place. But our teachers, our staff, right, and our families haven't always felt successful. I feel like they come together to make sure that those children know that school is a place for you. You are capable. You will learn, and we will do that work with you. And I think our families see that, and they love how we wrap around them to make that happen.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Coltrane.
Thank you for sharing this, and it's just exciting to see such an innovative model. And then the, the excitement from the four of you is just contagious. So I'm so glad to hear the impact it's had on you, but also on your students. Obviously, lab schools are a bit of, operate differently than a lot of other schools in our state. And so obviously, thinking about how to scale this model, would love for you to think about, and if you don't know this offhand, that's fine. Are there certain flexibilities that lab schools have that we would need other traditional schools to have? Or do you think this is a model that could be replicated within a traditional school without any additional flexibilities?
That is an excellent question. As we were building this innovative model, we were very intentional to make sure that it could be replicated in any public school in North Carolina or the United States. And so, yes, while we do have some flexibility around curriculum, we still do the same. We teach the standard course of study. We take all the check-ins. We do the EOGs. We do all the same things. And that's a choice that we make. EOGs are required. We do have some flexibility with funding, more similar to charter schools. I would say the one thing that does help, and so that, that gives us flexibility in how we use some of our funding. But the biggest thing that I think could be helpful for other schools, in order to do the four-day instructional model, having that enrichment Friday, the way that we use our substitutes, sometimes there are some limitations on how substitutes can be used and paid, whereas we have some flexibility with that. To me, that could be a very easy fix for any school. But other than that, we have been very intentional to make sure it's, it's replicable.
And I think, just something to note, is that the, the point of workforce design is that it works for your community. Every school is different in the way that they're set up, their grade levels, how many, you know, students that they have, how many teachers that they have. So really, you can make it look like how you need it to look. It doesn't have to look exactly like this. Elkin and Middle Fork are very different demographics, very different size, and very different when it comes to the amount of, of children that they serve and the staff that they have. So it looks different. We are doing the exact same thing. It just has to look different because of, of our workforce at, at Elkin versus Middle Fork. So yes, 100%. It works for you. You're just looking at your, your staffing and how you can strategically maneuver the adults that you have to wrap around those children and provide them what they need in order to co-teach and co-plan and co-assess and co-reflect.
We've also made sure that we are cost neutral. And so that was really important as well. Everything we did, we did with the same funding that we had last year and in previous years. And so I think that's a really important note to make.
And we're so, like, this, start with the grade level. You're talking about small steps. Schools right now, especially elementary schools, could start with one grade level that's willing to do this, and start from there and get that buy-in and see it. And I promise you, others will want to know what you're doing, how you're doing it, and how they can implement it and make it work. Because it's, it's, while it is a lot of work, I mean, you have to think differently about how school can be. And you have to have the leadership that pushes you and are willing to do that, and you have to have the staff members that are open and wanting to do this work. And so that's been key for us to really say that we, we're in this. We're 100% in this, and we need you to be in here with us, doing this work. So yes, it, it, it can be done, and we would love to get that started with some schools, for sure.
Ms. Kamenetz.
Yes, thank you, Chair deas, and thank you, Superintendent. I'm so glad that I'm joining this group next Monday, so I'm excited to do that. But just a little sort of side question, because we're not going to be there on Friday. I'm really curious, and I think, Dr. Reader, you just referred to a part of that solution, but while the teachers are planning, who, who are the adults with, with the students while they're doing all these wonderful things?
It's a combination of substitutes. So at Middle Fork, it's a combination of substitutes. Also, our teachers assistants are helping during that time, the Fridays. Also, some of our student teachers are getting experiences during that Friday where they're having to do some classroom management. They still get time to plan with their team, but they're also helping us to do that. And then the community partners and university partnerships, having different groups come in to bring other activities for our students, those other adults from the community are coming in and providing that support, too, so our teachers can have the time they need.
And teachers do not plan Fridays. They do not. They have no instructional responsibilities. That includes, they don't plan for Friday, except for that club. And then some additional things that they may want to ensure that we, the people that are planning Fridays, which are the administration, they, "Hey, I want to make sure my class kind of, you know, does this and this and this." And we're like, "Okay, we can make that happen." But really, I mean, and so I think that's different, too, when you're looking at the roles in schools, leadership versus teachers, and how we work together to make Fridays successful. But it, it's a pretty cool thing to experience and see. And, you know, the first month or so of implementing it, it was like trying to figure out, you know, who was what, who was, who needed to be where and what was happening. But now, once you come, it is seamless. I mean, it really is an incredible thing to experience. And all those fun things that make school, school, right? That doesn't happen Monday through Thursday. Majority of those things happen on Friday, including field trips, including all of these things. So it's really, again, just allocating staff, but also allocating the, what happens throughout the school week differently.
One other thing that I'll add about that, with substitutes on Friday, because of our model Monday through Thursday, we do not hire as many substitutes as we previously would have. Because with our model and a co-teaching model, if a teacher is out, the team picks that up. Everyone is co-teaching together anyway. So we're able to save a lot of money on substitutes that we were spending Monday through Thursday that we now can dedicate to those Fridays. So again, trying very hard to be as cost neutral as possible.
Thank you.
Any others? Well, I think your example teaches us a lot of things. One that really sticks out to me is when we take care of our teachers and we liberate them, our students get better outcomes.
Absolutely.
Picking up on Mr. Coltrane's question, I think I heard your answer was, "No, this can be replicated within the current, all the other systems, like accountability in HR, in finance." But I remember, Dr. Green, your comments, how you've done some of this work to the extent you could, which I think meant as limited by the other systems that are at work. So I think part of our learning is how to do this and then free you up even more to make it better by redesigning accountability, compensation, licensure, and all the other, many of the other components that we've talked about today. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's our last event for the morning. We'll now break for lunch, and let's, let's be back at 1:00. 1:00. Good afternoon. We are back in session, and if the morning wasn't fun enough, I guarantee you, the afternoon will be even more because we're starting off with a topic called Measuring Teacher Effectiveness. Mr. Favaria.
Thank you, Chair. All right, so we got some food, we got some energy, and we're ready to dive into our discussion questions that you saw Tom, Alex, and Julie present to us earlier. We have those discussion questions printed out, and we're going to set them out at all of the tables in the back. But before we break out, we've got a lot of ground to cover and a lot of ideas amongst all of you, I am sure. I wanted to bring in some help, some backup, to help facilitate this discussion. And one of the best models I've witnessed is the teamship approach employed by an organization called District C. District C works with school districts and students in those districts to teach the teamship model and work on real world, real-world problems. We're going to spend a few minutes learning about District C and teamship, and then, when we break out, we can employ some of these simple strategies that, that they're about to teach us during our table conversations. So I would like to call up Dan Gonzalez, who is the co-founder and CEO of District C, which is a North Carolina nonprofit.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. What a beautiful spot, and what a privilege to be here with all of you today. I know you all have a lot on your minds, a lot on your plates. Teacher recruitment and retention and effectiveness is a huge topic among probably 100 other topics that you consider, including, I would imagine, artificial intelligence and advances in technology. As we are witnessing perhaps one of the greatest technological advancements in generations, we're also thinking about how we educate our students in this environment. And yes, we need to prepare students to be tech-savvy, to be tech-literate, to be tech-innovators. But I would argue, more important than that, in an age, in an economy, when AI, computers, robots are taking the rote procedural work that humans used to do, more than ever, it's critical that we prepare our students to be great at the stuff that AI, computers, and robots cannot do. Namely, we got to prepare our students to be great humans. And what that means in my mind, at least in a professional world, is how do we prepare our students to be great at working together, working on a diverse team to solve novel, complex challenges? Working on teams to solve new challenges? I like to think of this as the human job description of the modern economy. Regardless of the sector, regardless of the job title, if you cannot work with other people to do hard things, you're going to struggle. And this is why we built District C. District C is a seven-year-old nonprofit based here in North Carolina, and our flagship program is called Teamship. Teamship, you can think of as a reimagined internship, as Ruben said, where teams of students work to solve real problems for real businesses in the community. And of course, through this work, through this team-based problem-solving work in a real context, students learn how to collaborate. They learn how to break down difficult problems. They learn how to leverage the best perspectives of their teammates. They learn how to present in front of professionals. They learn how to test solutions. All of these things that go towards their ability to work in teams to solve problems. One organization that I know you're familiar with is Spark NC. We're really honored to be one of the core program partners with Spark. And we offer a program with Spark called Spark Teamship. And Spark Teamship is pretty much the same as Teamship with one extra wrinkle, which is, Spark Teamship is teams of students, students from Spark districts, working together to solve real problems for high-tech businesses across the state. And so that's work we've been doing with Spark over the last couple of years, which is really exciting. As you can imagine, as we're coaching students up on how to do this work, one of the things we think a lot about is what makes a great team. And Ruben, thanks for inviting me here today to provide some, a couple of things that you may think about as you mosey on over to your, to your table work here in a second. But I'm essentially going to talk about a couple of things that we coach our students on. And where we start is what makes a great team. We know that diverse teams, we know from research, that diverse teams outperform homogeneous teams. Diverse teams outperform homogeneous teams. But only when those members of the diverse team know how to leverage the diverse perspectives of their teammates. And this is a focus of Teamship. And so what I want to do is talk about three tools that we coach our students on. They're very simple tools that I think you'll be able to implement, if you choose to, in the next hour or so as you're working with your, with your tablemates. And they are focused on how to get the best, how to get the best diverse perspectives out of your teammates, or in this case, out of your tablemates. The first tool, we call solo flight. And this is from a book by Susan Cain. Some of you may have read this. She has a book called Quiet, The Power of Introverts in a World That Can't Stop Talking. That resonates for me as, as an introvert. Half of us, by the way, are introverts. And one thing that she cites in her book is that what makes you an introvert is not that you are shy, bad at speaking in front of others, antisocial. One of the primary things that makes you an introvert, rather, is that you do your best thinking in what she calls solo flights of thought. Solo flights of thought. So if you are sitting around the table with six or eight people, you can imagine that three or four of those are introverts. And if you dive into a conversation about teacher effectiveness without giving those introverts time to do solo flights of thought, you're not getting the best out of those teammates. And so this is what we coach our students on. When you're given a tough question, a tough challenge, or some prompt, pause, provide five or 10 minutes for solo flight. So that's part number one. Part number two, coming out of a solo flight, we have a tool called Take Five. And Take Five literally means take five minutes for each person. Now, we've all been a part of table conversations, or group dynamics, or team dynamics, where two people do all the talking, the other four people sit and listen, the two people who do all the talking end up resenting the four people who aren't contributing, the four people who aren't contributing end up resenting the people who are doing all the talking, and you end up with this cycle. And that's what happens when you just start talking. If you start with solo flight, everyone gets a chance to think and collect their thoughts. And then if you move into what we call a Take And then if you move into what we call a Take Five, everyone has a chance to dive into their thoughts. The way that this works is you would literally say, okay, we're going to take five minutes per person and we're going to invest solely in that person for five minutes. That person might start by sharing, hey, here are the two things that really popped to mind for me during that solo flight. I'm going to share them quickly. And then maybe for the rest of the time, the other people at the table or the other people on your team are asking you questions to dig into your thinking. Investing in you for five minutes. We know what tends to happen, right? If you're talking, I'm kind of sitting over here thinking about the point that I want to make. I'm waiting for the right moment to maybe interrupt you or interject. Often that means changing the subject. And maybe this brilliant idea has gone untapped or unexplored. Or maybe this person hasn't had a chance to really delve deeper into her thinking. Maybe a follow-up question will prompt that deeper thinking. Which leads to the third tool, which is the questioning tool. So when you have someone who's doing a Take Five and the rest of the people at the table or on the team are wanting to invest in that person, the best way to invest in someone else's thinking is by asking them deep questions. Ask follow-up questions. Oh, that's really interesting. Can you say more about that? Why do you think that? What prompted that for you? Can you give an example of that? Notice that all of these questions are open-ended questions. And they're all open-ended because open-ended questions get people talking more. They get people saying what they think more. And if you're wanting to invest in someone at your table, asking them questions is going to allow you to go deeper in their thinking. So we've got three tools: solo flight, Take Five, and questioning. If you pair those together, start with a solo flight, then do a Take Five, so five minutes with one person. They share what they were thinking. Everyone else asks them good follow-up, open-ended questions. After five minutes, you move to the next person. You do the same thing. By the end of that cycle, you will have really deep thoughts surfaced for the table that individual intelligence is now collective intelligence. And that's the power of diverse teams, but only if you know how to leverage the diverse perspectives of the team. Contrast that, again, with what typically happens. Okay, let's start talking. One person starts talking, three people tune out. And so these are the kinds of things that we're teaching students to do when we get them into their teams for the first time and they're tackling really complex, novel challenges, real problems for real businesses. And again, these are designed to be really simple things that you can implement very quickly. Of course, you all are experienced professionals. I don't pretend to be able to dictate how you use your table time, but if you think these three tools might be helpful over the next hour or so, feel free to try to use them. If you have questions about them, I'll be kind of floating around to discuss as well. Thanks and good luck. This is an important topic. Thank you for tackling it.
Thank you, Dan. So I've seen these students use some of these tools and other tools, and so I'm excited to see y'all break out so I can watch y'all give it a shot. The discussion questions are all at the tables. We broke out into groups yesterday, and I think it would make sense to break out into those groups. You might find that there are some tablemates from yesterday who are not here today, and you might have new tablemates. But if you just start there, I will come around and get everybody situated. And we're going to take an hour. You've got three sets of questions, and so 20 minutes for each set, and I'll come around and let everybody know how we're doing on time.
Okay, we're back in session and have finished our workgroups. We now have an opportunity to hear from the field, and I'll turn to Mr. Favario for that introduction.
Thank you, Chair. You know, before we go to that, it was a pleasure to watch everybody working, to see everybody so engaged. I'm curious if anybody tried out any of the teamship tools that Mr. Gonzalez talked to us about before we broke into table groups?
I'll just say that we started our first question with the, that five-minute wait time that didn't last five minutes, but we did try it. And we had one member at the table, a member at the table who advocated to try it. And then it just, and then we realized, I think, we didn't have enough time in an hour to do that for every question.
Also, we used a team effective tool, which had one person on our team who was not really going to be able to pull his weight, so he realized he picked his fellow team members very selectively. So I would just say that.
Okay.
I picked Olivia and Catty, so there we are.
I liked the deep questions, the say more. Just tell me a little bit more about that. Expand your thinking on that. It gives people space to not assume anyone's belief system in something, like, I'm not assuming this. Tell me more about this before I decide. It was nice.
Love it. Absolutely love it. It was a joy for me to see you guys trying them out. I thought you did pretty good, but I thought it would be cool for you guys to see how the experts do it. So another reason that I invited Dan and his team at District C here is, as we talked about, District C works with, you know, local businesses on problems of practice. And those businesses, their problem practices get chosen and they're given to teams of students who then use this teamship approach to solving these problems. And I was talking to Dan a little bit about some of the questions you guys have been wrestling with over the last two days, and we thought, wouldn't it be interesting if this was a problem of practice for these District C students to dive into? And so, over a month ago, for two cohorts of students, they've been working on State Board and DPI problems of practice. And I've invited them here. So Julie Pittman and myself have worked with the students. We heard their presentations. Tabari Wallace joined us as a resource expert in one of those sessions. And these students have solutions to present to you, and you'll see the fruits of their teamship approach in just a moment. So I'm excited. I would like to call up the first group of students, and this is Ananya, Ronnie, Roshni, and Troy. Ananya is a senior in Cabarrus County Schools. Ronnie is a junior in Guilford County Schools. Roshni is a sophomore in Cabarrus County Schools, and Troy is a sophomore in Cumberland County Schools. What is this?
We're super excited to be here and really show what we've been working on to all of you. And we're Team One. My name is Roshni. And before we start getting to the solution, we just want to introduce ourselves. Hi, I'm Ananya Collingrath.
I'm Troy.
And I'm Ronnie. So today, we'd like to show you guys some improvements that we had made to the NCDPI current teacher evaluation system. So for our table of contents today, we're first going to be discussing the research that we had done and the key insight and process we had to developing our solution. We're going to talk to you guys about the peer, admin, student, and self-evaluation system that we had created, and show you how the current EVOs system will play into our solution. So for our key insight, through our research, we found that there is not a comprehensive, clearly defined, holistic way to evaluate the teachers effectively currently. So towards our goal, we created a few different steps that we had to finish. We first did a lot of research online and seeing how teachers are evaluated in the NCDPI system, as well as other states and other countries, to see what was most effective. We spoke with teachers in our own lives and teachers online as well to get their viewpoint on the current evaluation system.
So here's the evaluation breakdown. So as you can see, the EVOs system is now only taking 30% of the evaluation process. And the other 70% is going to be going to the other processes such as self-evaluation, which is going to be 25%. Student evaluation being at 15%, and admin, administration evaluation being at 30%. And these are going to be the effectiveness categories in which you guys will grade teachers using these processes. First, you have engagement where you ask questions like, is there a lesson interactive? Then you have student support, where you ask questions like, is there, do they allow inquiry from their students? You also ask questions based off of discipline, like, do they have control of the classroom? You also give bonus points to teachers who go above and beyond, like being part of clubs, having office hours, and also allowing tutoring. And so now we have our honorable mention for the evaluation process, which is peer evaluation, where teachers are going to be evaluated by other teachers, which isn't going to be a part of the final, like, evaluations for these teachers, but more so for their improvement throughout the year. And so how this process is supposed to go is, every teacher, every quarter, is assigned five other teachers to evaluate during that quarter. And teachers, so what the teachers do is they go into their peers' classrooms and just simply observe them teaching. After they're done with their observations, they complete a survey where they give suggestions on how they can improve and give a critique based on what they saw. And they grade based on some of the needs that were mentioned before.
We decided it would be important to include administration review in our plan as well. This will be done within all the grade levels, and there'll be four key different areas that we had determined of teacher effectiveness. Principals or counselors or the people in administration would rate the teacher's effectiveness in those categories we determined from zero to five. This will be done in student evaluation, done over a week between the two different years and the, two different semesters in the school year, and there'll be mandatory training, so all the evaluators know exactly what to find when determining teacher effectiveness
So let's get into the student evaluation. This will have two parts. And the first part is the student survey. In the student survey, this will only occur at the high school level, and there will be a sampling of questions from the four different areas of effectiveness that we mentioned earlier. And because we're trying to get efficient, we're evaluating efficiency in this part of the student evaluation, there will be no justification required, and students will be required to fill out this survey at the end of every term for all of their teachers. And the second part of this is the student interview. This will occur at all grade levels, but unfortunately, due to logistical constraints, it won't occur yearly. Ideally, we would want this to happen, have an interview about, done about a teacher every other year. And at the high school and middle school level, this will be a sampling of questions from the survey, and students will be still told to rate, but the interviewer, which would be an admin or a counselor at the school, they would get justification from the student so that they can determine the legitimacy of the rating. And at the elementary school level, this would be simpler questions and students would not be told to rate. Rather, the interviewer will determine the rating from the responses that they get. And how this would be implemented year to year, at the high school level, if an interview about a teacher occurs that year, then the student evaluation portion of the rubric would be split 50/50. But if an interview does not occur, then 100% of their evaluation will be based on the student survey. At the middle school and elementary school level, if a interview does not occur about a teacher, then there will be no student evaluation portion of the rubric. It will simply, the percentage taken up by the student evaluation will be distributed elsewhere into the rubric.
The next aspect is self-evaluations for teachers. This is based off of similar evaluation methods for other careers as well, where they're asked to kind of write themselves and reflect on their growth. So in this, in this way, teachers are asked to set three goals in the beginning of each year, and these goals will fall in the categories that we talked about before, which is disciplines, student support, and engagement. And after these goals are made, they're also asked to fill in check-in forms quarterly. This isn't for the actual evaluation, but more so that teachers aren't penalized for changing their strategies to fit those specific students better. And that is a concern that we heard from other teachers while we interviewed them. And then at the end of the year, they're asked to like actually fill out the evaluation aspect of it. In this one, they're asked to rate themselves from zero to five on these categories, as well as provide a detailed justification on why they believe in this rating. They're also asked to reflect on their goals, talk about evidence, like specifically the strategies that they used to, for example, improve discipline in their classroom. And they're also asked to reflect on their own professional development and set future goals for the years to come. In terms of additional details, we want to make sure that teachers are supported in creating those goals. So we'd like for a workshop to be created on the district level, maybe on like a teacher workday, for teachers to really learn how to create SMART goals and goals that are practical and are based on like research-based strategies. And we also want a post-evaluation discussion after the forms have been filled out, and this is to add an extra layer of accountability, as well as helps teachers really discuss what they can do better for the years to come. Now, as we talked before, we still want to keep EVOs to a certain degree because we do see the positive aspect of having some kind of objective and statistic-based rating as a part of the evaluation system. We just want to make sure that this isn't the only thing being considered, but we do want those numbers to be a part of the picture, which is why we decided on a 30% for the breakdown. And that's the final aspect.
To conclude, we believe that our solution that we proposed today will give NCDPI a holistic way to evaluate teachers on a regular basis. We thank you all for your time, and we open the floor to any questions.
And I could have, I could have done a better job setting this up, but Alex Granados told us earlier that one of the, one of the major issues that he sees with whatever advancement, you know, pathway that we, that comes from the state, is how do you measure teacher effectiveness? We presented this problem to these students about a month ago. At that time, how many of you understood EVOs? How about how teachers were evaluated in any way?
I had no idea.
These guys asked all of those questions from our first meeting and became resource experts, and they employed that teamship model that District C taught them, and this is where you end up.
Thank you all. I think, obviously, you did a lot of research and your understanding, your depth of understanding was amazing, and I think you've given us some really good things to think about. I mean, thank you so much.
I have a quick question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think you would.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think you can handle this after hearing your presentation. You're scholars on EVOs, by the way. If you were asked to answer a question about your teacher's effectiveness, what kind of question would you like to answer?
I think a place to start would be kind of based on those categories, on how they're able to provide student support, if they're able to keep the class engaging, if they're able to provide support when you don't completely understand something. I think based on those categories, kind of diving deeper would be the kind of questions.
Pretty good.
Another thing I would like to add to that, I think that if we were to make questions for students specifically, it would obviously have to be based on more of the day-to-day aspects of teaching. So like maybe talking about how they create a safe environment, or as Roshini was saying, like, are they engaging? And like, do you feel excited to learn when you're in their class?
Very good. Perfect. Thank you.
So we did our own little breakout sessions before this and discussed some of this stuff. And I love the aspect of student input into this, but we were talking about this, just in collecting data in general, but like the question of anonymity, you know, like how, I mean, people are people, you know, if students are giving interviews, like how can students... like, how can students feel confident in giving critical answers if it's not always positive?
So that's definitely a great question, and, uh, that's why we did want, like, admin to be in charge of it. And I guess part of it is kind of the honor code, that, like, teachers won't be told about this. I think hopefully students would be able to main, schools would be able to maintain that level of, like, accountability for the students, but obviously, they wouldn't be completely anonymous if it's an interview.
Yeah, and I think that there would be some, um, protection of, like, they're not going to tell the teacher necessarily what the student said, just so that they feel fully comfortable truthfully answering the questions.
I have a quick question. In your presentation, which, and I'm a big fan of student perception data being a part of how we create any kind of measurement system around educators, and I think it's a learning curve, and I think there are pitfalls, but I think you don't manage for the exceptions that create what you want. And so my question, specifically in terms of student perception data, is you, you settled on high school, not middle or elementary, as, as, in having perception data, and I, and I would love to hear your thoughts about how you settled on high school.
Um, yeah, I can definitely give some insight into that. Um, so as we interviewed teachers throughout this process, there was definitely a fear that students would give an evaluation based more on the emotional of, like, at the high school level, like, oh, I can't have my phone, or, oh, they're not allowing me to eat in class, right? Like, those kind of things were, like, they were afraid that that would factor into their interview, and we believed that at the high school level, um, that's thirteen and above. And so at that point, these, um, students will probably have the ability to critically think it's a, probably not the best term, but, you know, thoroughly think through their answers. But at the middle school and elementary school level, um, we still believe that there would be some immaturity within students, and so that's why we thought it was best to do an interview, um, only for middle school and elementary school, just so that there is an admin there, an adult there, who's looking at the answers and seeing, is this really based on how effective the teacher is, or is it just like a personal feeling?
I'm awestruck by what you young folks have done in the last month. It's, uh, it's very impressive, and I appreciate your willingness to devote the time that you have to this. A lot of what you have presented here to us as a proposal has to do with process, who does what, when, and how often, and so on. In our last session, we spent a lot of time talking about teacher effectiveness. And what came up in those sessions and what comes to mind when I hear your presentation is, what is teacher effectiveness? You've talked about the process of evaluating it, but did you guys have a chance to get into that question, to talk about what is teacher effectiveness? And maybe a way to put it is, if you had to, what would you say are three things that you would expect your teacher to do and do well?
Okay, so I think, uh, we talked about it kind of briefly in those categories of teacher effectiveness that we believe are kind of like the pillars, which is, like, engagement, making sure that the class is engaged, they're able to communicate their material in a way that makes sense to that, like, age demographic. And then student support, they're able to, like, be there for their students, both, you know, emotionally, as well as when the student doesn't understand something in specific. And then third was discipline, which is, uh, maintaining this environment of, like, safety and order, uh, so that, you know, every student feels safe, and they also feel, like, the teacher is going to be fair to them, things like that.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, like, having a teacher who creates a safe environment, and they're engaging to listen to as they teach the content, and also competency is a part of that, um, with, like, how well do they understand the material? And, yeah, I think, as, do, Ronnie or Troy, do you guys want to?
Um, yeah, I can just add on to that just a little bit. Um, I agree with the book of y'all, what y'all said. I would just like to add that basically, an effective teacher is just, like, when a student enters the classroom, they have, like, a better knowledge of the subject than, um, once they leave the classroom than when they came in, you know? And that, like, that teacher, they make sure they have control over that classroom, that, like, students aren't running them up, and, like, um, they actively have their student's engagement, and, like, that stays safe, like you guys said.
Yeah, I agree with Troy. I think engagement is a really big part of how effective your teacher is. If you're able to actually engage them, you're able to learn, and you're so much more open to being in school and pursuing, like, academics in the future. So I think a teacher that inspires you to keep going is very effective.
Well, thank you so much for, uh, thank you so much for the terrific work and insight and perspective that you've shared with us. We've learned a lot from you.
Thank you for having us.
You bet.
We're very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Now we have our second team. If I can find them. Okay, here we go. Second team, and we've got Ezekiel, Rashmi, and Keely. And Lily, I might need you on deck here. Oh, I think I found it.
Is that right? I just had to get up. Yeah. And then I just.
All right, so, uh, welcome to our teacher assessment proposal.
Is he ready?
Uh, I'm Ezekiel Wynn. I'm doing the first one.
Hi, I'm Keely Hawthorne.
And I'm Rashmi Rupa. So, uh, during this problem, we were tasked to, uh, with ways to fairly evaluate teachers in order to improve retention rates and encourage exceeding performance. After thorough research on this topic, we realized that accurately measuring a teacher's performance takes a lot, and it's very difficult to do this without, uh, lots of additional effort. Therefore, we decided to tackle this problem at its root. We came up with an alternate solution that helps achieve the overall goal of encouraging exceeding performance and improving retention rates. With this problem, with this knowledge, we move into our problem analysis. Throughout our extensive month of research, it has become evident that accurately measuring a teacher's performance presents significant challenges. Our findings reveal a consensus in, among both teachers and administrators, that existing methods fail to provide a truly accurate assessment. This notion stems from the acknowledgement that students may not possess the necessary perspective to evaluate teaching effectiveness comprehensively, and administrators, despite their oversight role, cannot be ubiquitous in the classroom. Um, in addition to these insights, uh, we move on to the role of passion, and, um, our team has adopted a novel approach to address this very intricate issue. Teaching is undeniably a profession fueled by passion. As affirmed by the majority of teachers surveyed who rated their belief in passion as a foundational aspect of teaching at eight or higher on our scale, um, moreover, teachers who enjoy the profession of teaching help foster the overall passion of teaching. Moving on to teacher effectiveness, I will pass this over to Zeke.
Right, so, uh, a fun part for our research for, you know, next slide. So a fun part for our research for me is what, uh, Jason, my teaching doctor, in our research, um, his work that found that we've in North Carolina, uh, schools with more, other principals have, uh, higher levels of teacher efficacy, and who knew that having a good boss might lead to a better work experience? Uh, other factors included, um, sorry, other factors of teacher efficacy include appreciation and rewards for good work and having time to connect with students and plan for, thank So, teaching can, uh, please for that, uh, is not necessarily the easiest job to have, which can be, it's a big turn up to a lot of people. Since we already established that, uh, people who do enter the career of teaching, do it for the love of teaching, uh, having strong connections, uh, create a large amount of teacher appreciation, or a feeling of appreciation of a teacher. Now, uh, the feeling of appreciation is also influenced by how teachers are treated by principals or higher, or overall appreciation of, overall appreciation of the work may be in-person class teaching or, uh, extracurricular focusing of events or tutoring. Uh, to be right, you'll see a graph of, uh, past studies which indicate that people who feel appreciated at their work are unlikely to change jobs within the next year, and those who, uh, do not feel appreciated are likely to change jobs within the next year. Now, this leads to our insight and our conclusion. So, essentially, what we found in our studies and in our surveys is that teachers really enjoy teaching. Uh, they really love talking to students, interacting with students, they love, uh, planning for interacting with students. Uh, they really enjoy having good strong support from, uh, good principals, and of course, they like being paid. Most people do. Uh, teachers tend to dislike administrative work, contacting parents for, for siblings, um, lack of face and local communication, and not being well compensated for their work.
To recap, although we were told to find ways to properly evaluate, um, we came up with the realization that no matter what we came up with in terms of an evaluation strategy, there would be some kind of bias, flaw, loophole, that would cause our strategy to be defective. That's why we decided to tackle this problem at its root, increasing teacher effectiveness. Therefore, um, we think the best way to address this is by looking at common complaints from teachers, as well as addressing the, um, teacher retention. Our solution consists of a multifaceted approach to ensure that teachers enjoy their work environment and also thus improving, uh, performance and retention rates. Point A addresses the need for teachers to establish strong connections with their students, which we know they love, and this will help them understand students' learning needs and also encourage exceeding performance in their students. Point B addresses a decrease in administrative duties, since teachers tend to dislike this, and this way, they can focus more of their time towards instructional efforts. Point C addresses the need for teachers to have more planning time. To have appropriate time for lesson planning will allow them to address point A as well. And lastly, we'd like to reduce financial burdens on teachers, since they're not paid a huge amount and often spend more money than they'd like to on their classroom and So here we've detailed a step-by-step plan on how to implement the four main, uh, points of our prototype. Um, so some of the ways teachers can establish a connection with their students is by creating a powerful social environment, where students aren't afraid to speak, uh, to their, uh, talk to their teachers. Make, uh, making small changes, like asking about a student's day, has been shown to make students more comfortable with their teachers. Another part of having a connection with students could be creating ti, um, times to have one-on-one help sessions in class or after school. Lastly, we recommend decreasing class sizes or providing teachers with ways to accommodate larger class sizes. Point, that leads us to point B, and after talking to different teachers and evaluating results, we learned that teachers are usually irritated by non-teaching duties. So, we decided that it would be a really good idea to reduce the amount of county and state work given to teachers every week. Additionally, we recommend reducing the amount of large staff meetings and only holding them when truly necessary, and instead utilizing effective communication platforms like Slack and Microsoft Teams to, um, still communicate with administration. That leads us to point C. To reduce, um, or to increase lesson planning time, we recommend that teachers implement a concept similar to our asynchronous workdays that we had during online school. In this concept, teachers will designate one specific day of the week to refrain from teaching lessons, and instead give students independent work, video lessons, and more, while they focus on their professional development, lesson planning, grading, so they still have time to work on it in school and not have to work extra hours to get this work done.
So, uh, the financial section of teachers is, uh, a bit nuanced, since raising the pay of every single teacher in the state, or even a much fewer teacher in the state, would end up being quite expensive. So, uh, one of our solutions, which we actually got possession from a teacher, would be to introduce tax benefits or tax reduction, uh, to the teachers. So that would mean, like, uh, reducing their taxes, giving them tax write-offs, uh, giving them, uh, discounts, tours, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, we thought this was an interesting idea, since it would change how teachers are being paid, and they'll, at least alleviate some of their financial burden without actually changing the available pool of money for the educational budget. Uh, some other popular ideas were, uh, reimbursement for money spent on class, uh, from a teacher's personal wallet, or, uh, providing site attendants or pay for tutoring or extracurricular work.
That was a lot of information to process, I'm sure, but we still got a little bit more to go. As you can tell, much of this solution was formulated by taking into account the opinions of teachers. We sent out a survey ourselves and tried to get as many different opinions from as many different teachers as possible. Um, and although our research was very thorough, as attested to by our thirty-seven-page document, the best insights we got were from teachers' firsthand opinions, and that's why, before implementing the solution, we strongly encourage you to gain insight and perspective from teachers. This will help you address any potential issues or make improvements to the solution as needed. Additionally, we recommend running significance tests for, that'll interview teachers to see if our solution is truly effective in the long run, and making changes as needed. Our solution will help, our solution will help eliminate the teach, uh, the problem of teacher burnout, and hopefully help the shortage of teachers by making the profession of teaching more appealing in the long run, and encourage more people to pursue this amazing career. Um, next slide. Thank you so much for your time and attention today. We hope that you, we were able to provide you with valuable insights and a strong solution to this problem. Please let us know if you have any questions at this time.
Any questions? Ms. Carper?
Have you chatted with the App State Lab School recently? Because I think they had a lot of the same ideas. Um, if you went to a school where teachers were able to do this, how do you think that would impact your learning?
I think it would only, like, make our learning better, 'cause, see, a burnt-out, tired teacher doesn't help anyone. It's not going to make us feel better about learning, it's not going to engage us properly, and a teacher having, like, proper breaks, enjoying their work environment, and really, like, learning to love their job once again, like they did when they first started, would really, would really, um, help us, as students. They'd be more engaged during lessons, and that would lead us to be more engaged. They'd do better in their teaching, and that would lead us to do better in our tests. And so I think it would only positively impact us, if anything.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay. Um, you mentioned a positive social environment. Can you say more about that?
Right. So, um, one thing I noticed was in elementary school, we get asked our names, we do get to know you activities, all the teachers know all the students. And I understand that's harder when we get to middle school and high school. We have larger class sizes, more classes, more curriculum, more things to cover, I understand that. But there are still teachers out there who still manage these things and still learn the names of their students. There are teachers whose, I will be in their classroom, I've been in teachers' classrooms for three semesters, and they still don't know my name. That is kind of sad. That is not a powerful social environment. It doesn't encourage anyone. It's, it's a common problem in big class sizes and big schools, and it's really sad. And I think we should ta, set aside some time to, like, learn more about the students, to learn more about their needs, their, um, their learning styles, since learning style is such an important thing, and most teachers don't even know how to, like, accumulate to that. Instead, we're always focused on testing and scores, but we never get to know the student, and that isn't something that we enjoy anymore. So that's what we wanted to encourage by a power social, powerful social empire, environment.
Something?
Do you mind if I type in a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I think a big distinction that I, I came to realize recently, though, actually, is the difference between teaching and covering course content. Because you can cover course content pretty easily, and, you know, you can get it in, like, self- Because you can cover course content pretty easily and you know, you can get it in like self-paced online classes, like my AP class, self-paced online, my teacher does relatively little. But the thing that makes him a good teacher despite the fact that I've never met him, is the fact that he's willing to like take time to like set aside tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays and he'll talk to me, he'll like give me feedback on my work, he'll, you know, help me out. It's not that his effectiveness comes from his ability to teach, it comes from his ability to help me, with what I'm struggling about saying. Whereas on my other online course, which is AP Gov, my teacher's not very responsive and has told me to just Google answers before. So I think that there's a major difference between teaching and covering course content.
Thanks for that insight. Other questions, Superintendent?
Thank you so much. And before I ask my question, I do want to say to Zeke that my favorite piece of advice that a principal ever gave me was that it was my role not to cover material, but to help students discover material. And so what you're saying really resonates with me. Thank you for the heart. I guess this is not a question, it's a suggestion to you all. One of the things that fascinates me is the research of the OECD, which is an international membership organization where countries that are developed or are developing can belong to this international organization that does research on climate, education, economics. And I love their education research because I like to see how the United States stacks up to other countries when it comes to education. And one of the things they track is the amount of professional development teachers get in different countries. Teachers in America spend more time in the classroom with their students teaching than any other country's teachers who are part of this organization. We're talking over 100 countries. And other countries take time to allow teachers or to prioritize teachers to participate in professional learning, which is something that as a nation, we just historically have not done. And, and so I love that part of your recommendation was the, is kind of the four-day work week with the fifth day spent being devoted, you're still devoted to your students, but you're doing it in a different way, you're showing care for them in a different way by looking at their data and taking time to think about how you're going to, to do things. The third thing I want to point out is that I've had the pleasure to work with Lily in a group yesterday and today with Ms. Camnitz and Tabari and Gab. And when we asked Lily, well, what would be the, the number one thing that you would want to have your teachers evaluated on? It, it's showing up in the work that you've shown us, which is, what, what she said was their ability to differentiate their instruction to meet the needs of all learners. That's pretty much what you said, Lily. Not just give the same kind of assignment over and over and over again. And Dan asked her, is it important to you to have a subject matter expert? And Lily, you want to share what your answer was? Because this is, this is all resonating with what you all have said.
Yeah. Well, when you were talking about like professional development, like I, some, you know, we're required to go to school by law and some people, you know, either love that or resent that, you know, as students. But I think especially middle and high school and some elementary school students really struggle to engage in class when there's this like adverse power dynamic, when the teacher is the one who holds all the answers and they are the ones bestowing it upon the students. And like I know, sometimes I like to be difficult on purpose. And so sometimes, you know, I'll figure out my teacher doesn't necessarily know a whole lot in this unit, so I'll ask some questions to, to sort of find that out. And, and I've only had like two teachers be like, you know what Lily, I don't know. Let me find the answer, or let's find the answer together. So it's like, teachers who aren't learning can't teach their students to love learning as well because it's changing all the time. So if we have teachers who love to learn, their students will in turn love to learn. And yeah, I think the, the, keeping teachers engaged in teaching is sort of what you guys talked about. And that being the root of their purpose, rather than to fulfill all these administrative roles was really awesome. But yeah, that was my two cents on that.
Thank you.
And now the student is the master.
Other comments or questions? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break and take time to go thank our students. They did such a wonderful job.
Thank you. That went well.
Okay, we are back in session and I will turn the last program item over to Mr. Peforia to introduce.
Thank you Chair. There was a couple of reasons that I wanted to make sure we had these students we just heard from. And the first reason is just that power of teamship. Like you think about where these students were, and I wish you could have seen what Julie and Tabari and I saw when, at that first meeting versus where they are now. And they got there through obviously hard work, but also through that teamship. And it's a reminder, number one, of the incredible, the valuable resource, the valuable human capital we have in each of our public schools. So that as we tackle all of the issues that we have to tackle, there's this untapped, you know, resource. So this reminder of that is a reminder of the power of working together. The second is that student voice and just bringing voice to decision makers. And on that note, we'll move now from student voice to teacher voice. And I will turn it to Julie Penman.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back up to the podium today. I'm here joined by two of my colleagues, Leah Carper, who you know, and Erin Ellington. Erin Ellington is the 2021 Northwest Region Teacher of the Year. She spoke with this board at a planning and work session two Novembers ago, when we, I think it was two Novembers ago, when we were in, we were at DPI when we did it. So Erin has come and talked on another issue, but we're going to talk today about the Teacher Leadership Council, which, you can advance to the next slide, which I've brought to you several times specifically over the last two months. But today, we're really going to talk about the expanded work that this group is doing and how we've been able to build a system of feedback and professional development for teachers. So as you recall, when I was brought on by Superintendent Truitt, amongst several things she asked me to do, the number one thing that she wanted me to accomplish was to close the feedback loop with teachers in the field. And so I, through several regional directors and the supervision of the superintendent, embarked on trying to create a Teacher Leadership Council. And, and we started off with 32 teachers. So we had 32 teachers who were either Regional Teachers of the Year or District Teachers of the Year back in 2021. We met monthly and then it just expanded from there. So we're sort of going to take you on a brief journey of what that has looked like and how we've really been able to close this feedback loop. So as I said, we meet monthly via Zoom. We meet on the, we're actually meeting at four o'clock today. So I'm trying to, I'm going to get through this quickly so I can get to my four o'clock meeting. I'm straddling lots of different meetings today. So we meet at, on the Wednesday of the board meeting from four until 5:30. We get in, we get to give input on DPI initiatives. We collaborate bi-regionally on professional development, conference planning and other things. Today, we're going to be meeting about the Teacher Working Condition Survey. So Dr. Corn is going to do a brief introduction of that work that she talked with you all with yesterday. And then like you, we will separate into four different groups and do the same process that you all did with the data by region. We'll do it with two regions. So the West and the Northwest meet together, the Northeast and the Southeast meet together, and then Sand Hills North Central and Piedmont Triad and the Southwest. So we, it, it just makes it easier for us to do it that way. Sometimes we split out into all eight regions and we put the charters in where they are geographically located. We receive professional development on hot topics and requested topics that the teachers need, like on mental health and wellbeing for adults. So really caring for adults and helping adults really deal with the, what they're doing in their day-to-day lives. And then we have reports on district and regional initiatives that come back to us. Today, we're hearing about a great opportunity from two different districts who are presenting to us on professional learning communities and, and how they'll be able to, to virtually dive into that work. And then we also participate in research and work groups that affect teacher recruitment and retention, which is our biggest and number one priority. I also asked in that first year that our Regional Teachers of the Year create regional meetings so that they would, from that first meeting with the state, go into their regional meetings and loop in all of their District Teachers of the Year. And then it grew to Beginning Teachers of the Year as well for the NCAT, BTOIs. And we've also added the CTE Teachers of the Year in a variety of places. So each region has the opportunity to meet the week following our meeting, so most of them will meet next week, and discuss issues and gather feedback from a wider audience. From there, those teachers then sometimes will send out surveys, will send out newsletters, or will send out notes to their local district or local teacher so that they can get more feedback. And then in the following month, it comes back to the state meeting. We have various different modes of communication. It really depends on the region and how that region is being led by the, the regional teachers. It's completely autonomous and up to them. Some regions are very robust and some are not. Because some regions have already opportunities and platforms to give feedback, whereas other more ruled regions do not. So we meet, they meet virtually, they have newsletters, emails and surveys, as I said. This is actually a picture of Erin's group from the Northwest. So I'm going to share this a little bit with, with Leah, but we created a partnership with the Equitable Foundation. Equitable Foundation sponsored the AIM Conference in 2021. And from that sponsorship, the, the Equitable Foundation team wanted to know how they could support teachers in North Carolina more. So they support the National Teacher of the Year Program. They wanted to know how they could support the, the North Carolina Teacher of the Year Program. So we invited them to sponsor the live stream for the TOI and the POI ceremonies. And, but they want, they wanted to do more. They said, well, I said, there, there are nine Teachers of the Year and nine Principals of the Year, but we have this expanding and growing Teacher Leadership Council that has many more teachers on it than just those nine. And we're building it as, as the years go by. And so they said, well, we would like to give you $50,000 a year to cover the live stream as well as support you in sending teachers to regional, state and national professional development opportunities. And they also have offered professional development opportunities for us because their major focus is on student and teacher mental health and wellbeing. So, and we also said, we don't want just a sponsor, we want a partner. And so they really have come arm-in-arm with these teachers. Their, their folks in the field go into the schools where they are doing work and they celebrate those teachers there. They are, they are coming with us on professional development opportunities and learning with us so that they have a better understanding of, of really what it's like to be a teacher.
Something that we're really grateful for is that they will have us come to their offices. So we've been to their offices in Charlotte a few times where they've hosted us so that we can all meet together in one space that's not just in Raleigh, just like us today. We're trying to move around the state to make it more equitable for, huh?
Get it?
Equitable for, for everyone. And so we're grateful that they, they look at us as a partner and they want to learn from all of us. Also, they've given us opportunities to, they've invited members of the TLC to come out to events that they're hosting so that the teacher voice can come out to the business world, which is something that we would really like to expand because we're the ones who are creating the next workforce. And so it's been a really wonderful partnership.
Can I just, so when I said that they gave us $50,000 a year, it's for three years and so this is our last year. And we, we are, we are talking about the possibility of expanding that, but the future is uncertain at this point with where things are going to go. So we'll see how that's going to work out. This, this is you talking about.
Oh, and I, we already mentioned this, but there's, wow. Something else that our Teacher Leadership Council does is we lead regional, national conferences for educators. We not just attend them, but we also give, give PD at those. So at the AIM Conference and at many other conferences, here's a picture of us at the Reich College right here at App State giving professional development. Dawn was there. What's up, Dawn? Look at us. At these conferences, this is a great opportunity for us to share the knowledge that we have and engage with teachers everywhere. Something about being a teacher is it can feel, you can feel pretty isolated a lot and feel like you're in it alone. And as you meet other educators throughout the state who are in it with you and who understand you, it builds you all and it builds your capacity for being better. And so that's what this Teacher Leadership Council has given us, is this opportunity to engage with educators all over the state and, and the country. Oh, we've also had the opportunity to keynote at conferences and lead PDs, especially AIM. That was, one of the highlights of my year was, was keynoting at AIM. But also anytime that, what I love about Julie and what I love about the board actually is anytime there's an opportunity to bring teacher voice to the table, Catherine's always looking for those opportunities. And that's, that's huge to tap into the network that he's established and to try to expand that network. Because when you hear from the people who are actually doing the work, that's when you get the actual answers to the questions that you have. And then finally, our TLC gets asked to do a lot of great things, like a lot of great advocacy work for, so at the Child Hunger Leaders Conference and beyond, many members of our Teacher Leadership Council have been in multiple documentaries about child hunger. They have gone and participated in the Education Policy Fellowship Program where they've met with our legislators. They also participated in Bring Your Legislator to School Day. We asked for all of our district members of our TLC to invite their legislators to come out to their schools on April 15th. And our teacher leaders were the ones who were really like pushing that work and asking their superintendents, are we going to do this? Is this going to happen? Can they come to my classroom? And I will tell you, we've done it for two years now. My teachers, Principals of the Year and I have hosted this event for two years now. And this year, because we included the TLC more robustly and because the TLC has expanded so much, we had more, more participation this year than last year and, and it's only growing. So we're really, really grateful for these teachers who are learning how to be leaders in education and use their teacher voice to benefit all.
We also have the opportunity to have some external engagement. So a lot of our, we have a state organization called the North Carolina National Network of Teachers of the Year, State Teachers of the Year, and it's for all State Teachers of the Year and Regional Teachers of the Year. So it's State Teachers of the Year and finalists. And this goes back multiple, like, I don't know who the oldest person on that, like the, many, it's a lot of people. So we meet with them as well and we're doing some joint.
We're either Regional Teachers of the Year or District Teachers of the Year. Back in 2021, we met monthly and then it just expanded from there. So we're sort of going to take you on a brief journey of what that has looked like and how we've really been able to close this feedback loop. So as I said, we meet monthly via Zoom. We meet on the, we're actually meeting at four o'clock today. So I'm trying to, I'm going to get through this quickly so I can get to my four o'clock meeting. I'm straddling lots of different meetings today. So we meet at, on the Wednesday of the board meeting from four until 5:30. We get in, we get to give input on DPI initiatives. We collaborate bi-regionally on professional development, conference planning and other things. Today, we're going to be meeting about the Teacher Working Condition Survey. So Dr. Corn is going to do a brief introduction of that work that she talked with you all, with yesterday. And then, like you, we will separate into four different groups and do the same process that you all did with the data by region. We'll do it with two regions. So the West and the Northwest meet together, the Northeast and the Southeast meet together, and then Sandhills North Central and Piedmont Triad and the Southwest. So we, it, it just makes it easier for us to do it that way. Sometimes we split out into all eight regions and we put the charters in where they are geographically located. We receive professional development on hot topics and requested topics that the teachers need, like on mental health and well-being for adults. So really caring for adults and helping adults really deal with the, what they're doing in their day-to-day lives. And then we have reports on district and regional initiatives that come back to us. Today, we're hearing about a great opportunity from two different districts who are presenting to us on professional learning communities and, and how they'll be able to, to virtually dive into that work. And then we also participate in research and work groups that affect teacher recruitment and retention, which is our biggest and number one priority. I also asked in that first year that our Regional Teachers of the Year create regional meetings so that they would, from that first meeting with the state, go into their regional meetings and loop in all of their District Teachers of the Year. And then it grew to Beginning Teachers of the Year as well for the NCAT, BTOIs. And we've also added the CTE Teachers of the Year in a variety of places. So each region has the opportunity to meet the week following our meeting. So most of them will meet next week and discuss issues and gather feedback from a wider audience. From there, those teachers then sometimes will send out surveys, will send out newsletters, or will send out notes to their local district or local teacher so that they can get more feedback. And then in the following month, it comes back to the state meeting. We have various different modes of communication. It really depends on the region and how that region is being led by the, the regional teachers. It's completely autonomous and up to them. Some regions are very robust and some are not because some regions have already opportunities and platforms to give feedback, whereas other more ruled regions do not. So we meet, they meet virtually. They have newsletters, emails and surveys, as I said. This is actually a picture of Erin's group from the Northwest. So I'm going to share this a little bit with, with Leah, but we created a partnership with the Equitable Foundation. Equitable Foundation sponsored the AIM Conference in 2021. And from that sponsorship, the, the Equitable Foundation team wanted to know how they could support teachers in North Carolina more. So they support the National Teacher of the Year Program. They wanted to know how they could support the, the North Carolina Teacher of the Year Program. So we invited them to sponsor the live stream for the TOI and the POI ceremonies. And, but they want, they wanted to do more. They said, well, I said, there, there are nine Teachers of the Year and nine Principals of the Year, but we have this expanding and growing Teacher Leadership Council that has many more teachers on it than just those nine. And we're building it as, as the years go by. And so they said, well, we would like to give you $50,000 a year to cover the live stream as well as support you in sending teachers to regional, state and national professional development opportunities. And they also have offered professional development opportunities for us because their major focus is on student and teacher mental health and well-being. So let, and we also said, we don't want just a sponsor. We want a partner. And so they really have come arm-in-arm with these teachers. Their, their folks in the field go into the schools where they are doing work and they celebrate those teachers there. They are, they are coming with us on professional development opportunities and learning with us so that they have a better understanding of, of really what it's like to be a teacher.
Something that we're really grateful for is that they will have us come to their offices. So we've been to their offices in Charlotte a few times where they've hosted us so that we can all meet together in one space that's not just in Raleigh, just like us today. We're trying to move around the state to make it more equitable.
Huh?
Get it?
Yeah.
Equitable for, for everyone. And so we're grateful that they, they look at us as a partner and they want to learn from all of us. Also, they've, they've given us opportunities to, they've invited members of the TLC to come out to events that they're hosting so that the teacher voice can come out to the business world, which is something that we would really like to expand because we're the ones who are creating the next workforce. And so it's been a really wonderful partnership.
Can I just, so when I said that they gave us $50,000 a year, it's for three years. And so this is our last year. And we, we are, we are talking about the possibility of expanding that, but the future is uncertain at this point with where things are going to go. So we'll see how that's going to work out. This, this is you talking about.
Oh, and I, we already mentioned this, but there's.
The next slide, please.
Wow. Something else that our Teacher Leadership Council does is we lead regional, national conferences for educators. We not just attend them, but we also give, give PD at those. So at the AIM Conference and at many other conferences, here's a picture of us at the Reich College right here at App State giving professional development. Dawn was there. What's up, Dawn? Look at us. At these conferences, this is a great opportunity for us to share the knowledge that we have and engage with teachers everywhere. Something about being a teacher is it can feel, you can feel pretty isolated a lot and feel like you're in it alone. And as you meet other educators throughout the state who are in it with you and who understand you, it builds you all and it builds your capacity for being better. And so that's what this Teacher Leadership Council has given us, is this opportunity to engage with educators all over the state and the, and the country.
The next one, Charles.
Oh, I'm terrible at this. Oh, we've also had the opportunity to keynote at conferences and lead PDs, especially AIM. That was, one of the highlights of my year was, was keynoting at AIM. But also anytime that, what I love about Julie and what I love about the board actually is anytime there's an opportunity to bring teacher voice to the table, Catherine's always looking for those opportunities. And that's, that's huge to tap into the network that he's established and to try to expand that network. Because when you hear from the people who are actually doing the work, that's when you get the actual answers to the questions that you have. And then finally, our TLC gets asked to do a lot of great things, like a lot of great advocacy work for, so at the Child Hunger Leaders Conference and beyond, many members of our Teacher Leadership Council have been in multiple documentaries about child hunger. They have gone and participated in the Education Policy Fellowship Program where they've met with our legislators. They also participated in Bring Your Legislator to School Day. We asked for all of our district members of our TLC to invite their legislators to come out to their schools on April 15th. And our teacher leaders were the ones who were, who really like pushing that work and asking their superintendents, are we going to do this? Is this going to happen? Can they come to my classroom? And I will tell you, we've done it for two years now. My teachers, Principals of the Year and I have hosted this event for two years now. And this year, because we included the TLC more robustly and because the TLC has expanded so much, we had more, more participation this year than last year and, and it's only growing. So we're really, really grateful for these teachers who are learning how to be leaders in education and use their teacher voice to benefit all.
We also have the opportunity to have some external engagement. So a lot of our, we have a state organization called the North Carolina National Network of Teachers of the Year, State Teachers of the Year. And it's for all state teachers of the year and regional teachers of the year. So it's state teachers of the year finalists. And this goes back multiple, like, I don't know who the oldest person on that, like the, as many, it's a lot of people. So we meet with them as well and we're doing some joint professional development, not just for the teachers of the year or the teachers in the TLC, but joint professional development for other teachers around the state. And, and that partnership has just now been solidified in the last three months. And we're excited to be able to partner with them and expand the work and capacity that they're doing because we have so many other teachers that are going to be involved in that. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show you where they are. So this is a map of North Carolina and all the districts. And where you see a red dot is where we have at least one teacher on the Teacher Leadership Council. Not every single district is covered, but that is not for lack of trying. So this year, we sent out a, we sent a request to every single district teacher of the year and every single Beginning Teacher of the Year finalist and asked them if they would like to participate in the Teacher Leadership Council. Some people just did not have it in their capacity to take on one more thing. And so while we're waiting for some superintendents to give us some alternative names, we're still, we still have some gaps in some places, but not many. So 79 out of 100 counties are covered by this Teacher Leadership Council. And you must say, okay, well, there are 100 counties and you said you had 32 people on the council. Well, now we have 142, if you go to the next slide. And we have 142 teachers on the council who are engaging with us every month. Again, monthly Zoom meetings, we do two to three face-to-face opportunities, including AIM, but also when we're meeting at Equitable or across the state. Our representation covers a wide span of teachers. So traditional pre-K through 12th grade, cooperative innovative schools, charter schools, NCVPS, we have multiple North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, including the two North Carolina Virtual Public School, three now, NCVPS teachers of the year, but also other folks. Pre-K, elementary, middle and high school. We have Beginning Teachers, CTE teachers of every, every area. English, social studies, math, science, art, music, multi-language, multi-language learner teachers, exceptional children and AIG. We have folks who are National Board Certified, Keenan Fellows, Milken Award winners and international teachers. We have Beginning Teacher Support, Beginning Teacher Support teachers and coordinators, instructional coaches and, and one, I think one, career development coordinator. So we have expanded it to people who used to be teachers and now are expanding their teacher leadership into some other areas because those folks are also invited to have this voice. So it is truly a great representation across the state. Next slide, our Teacher Leadership Council work covers many other aspects other than what we do at the Teacher Leadership Council. We have members who serve on the Ethics Committee, on the Portrait of a Graduate Planning Groups and Rubric Design. One of our Beginning Teachers of the Year, who is from Ashe County, maybe, Candace Faton-Haines?
Oh, she's from Mount Airy City.
Mount Airy City Schools is, is serving as the sole science teacher on the, on the science plant, the science planning group for the Portrait of a Graduate, and she's excellent. Standards Review, School Performance Grade Redesign, Teacher Working Condition Survey. We were the first people to get the, to be able to give some feedback. Teacher Advancement, Royal Educators Network and Bring Your Legislator to School Day. People at NCDPI and the General Assembly have gotten to know teachers on the TLC and the teachers now have a better understanding of what's happening at DPI and at the General Assembly, although there's still more work to be done. But, but when we're able to do that, they're, they have more tools to be able to engage in the work that is meaningful to them and their colleagues. So there's always an option of what they want to do. We never ask them to do something that is beyond the scope of where their, where their focus is. So I'm going to turn this over to Erin and she's briefly going to talk to you about the regional councils.
Hello, if I have not met you before, I'm Erin Ellington and I welcome you to Boone. I get to live here and so, and we are thrilled that you are visiting us and working here these few days. I get the privilege of sharing with you about my cohort. I am from the cohort of 2021 Regional Teachers of the Year. And over the course of our time working together, we came up with a hashtag when we started working together called Elevate to Educate. And that kind of informed our work. Elevate teacher voice to educate not only, of course, our students, but others that might not be involved in education, including decision makers like y'all. And so that kind of informed our work. And if possible, I would love to drop, if you, if you don't mind driving to our website. We've, we've kind of renamed ourselves Teach 21. And our mission and vision helped us develop this idea of expanding Teacher Leadership Councils with modeling after the state version, as, as we were involved in, in our first year, but modeling after the state version to not only the region, but the district version. And so if you go over to the tab that says TLC Toolkit, we are hoping that our State Teacher Leadership Council then spans all the way out to all of the districts and, as Julie just said. And if you just keep scrolling down just a little bit, it, it'll show you that content, keep going a little even further, there are some artifacts here for districts, regions who are working to build their Teacher Leadership Council. So through a grant by Burroughs Welcome Fund, we were able to work together in creating things like a readiness audit. So where are, where do you stand? Do you, do you even, does one even exist in your district or region? And then from there, what can you do to get that built up? We have the privilege of working with my colleague and friend Jenny Bryan from the Southeast, who works in Brunswick County and has this wonderful exemplary Teacher Leadership Council that has been in existence for a while. And so we use that as our exemplar to kind of look at, okay, so what do they do? How does that look to make, to make that happen in other places? And I'm going to come back to that in just a second. But so there are these resources here and those are available to anybody. We, in addition to that, also have a podcast to help, again, get the word out about this topic. So if, if you don't mind to go back to the slides, that'll take us to, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit, if you don't mind to go to the next slide. Zoom in here specifically to the Northwest. So as Julie mentioned, we were tasked with creating this Regional Teacher Leadership Council so that we could have our voices represented on the state level. And here in the Northwest, Maggie Murphy and I, who was the 2020 Northwest Region Teacher of the Year, we started with just like, let's do teacher appreciation shout-outs. Like just, let's just start there. And that's where it started. And as you heard about the state council, it has just grown as we've added people and as we've had, as we've learned more and as we've had more time. And so there's a little animation on the next graphic there, please. So our mission has developed and evolved to be learn, elevate, advocate and discover. And learning comes from learning what's happening on the state level and bringing that back. And so again, there's another animation. So here's our newest member of the Northwest Region Leadership Council. His name is Eric Mortensen. He is also from Watauga County, which is awesome. And so he will be our next newest representative on the state council. And then if you.
He's an auto tech teacher.
He's a CTE, fabulous CTE teacher. His kids just got back from a competition and they won all kinds of amazing awards. And so in terms of elevating and advocating as part of our mission, we have a bi-weekly newsletter that highlights each month, we have a portrait of a graduate trait that we highlight. We highlight all the good news, all the good things that are happening in districts with specific teachers and try to promote any professional development that's on the horizon to, again, elevate teacher voice and then advocate for the profession. And then finally, we also meet in person and online to help discover the connections between what's going on in districts in the Northwest. So we have quarterly Zoom meetings where we invite folks to speak, just like we model, just like y'all do at the state level. We just had Dr. Betsy Rosenbaum in one of our most recent meetings who was here to speak on teacher recruitment and retention because that was what was requested by our members. They wanted to know more about that. And so, and then we have an in-person summit that we hosted where folks got together and for an entire day. So I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You have to start the next one.
Oh, okay, bye, okay. Go start the TLC. She's going to start the meeting now.
I was going to start it and give it, but we probably need.
We're actually going to all be on that meeting this entire time.
Yes. So I'm, so she's wrapping, she's wrapping me up. Okay, wrapping it up. Okay, and so we met in person in a summit to give folks the opportunity to be in a work session, to figure out where they stand, use those resources, as I mentioned about, from Teach 21, and then say, how can we build this in our districts for a teacher learning, Teacher Leadership Council? I think I have maybe two more slides. Yes. So then, so using Brunswick County as an exemplar, Teach 21 kind of found out that there's kind of been a continuum. And if you just click, I think, twice, there's entry-level TLCs that maybe didn't exist or have just started. There are existing level TLCs that maybe have some opportunity to grow teacher voice. And then we use Brunswick County as the exemplar to build that out. And just for an example, Jenny Bryan just gave me this information just the other day. After speaking with superintendents and some chief academic officers, after a little bit of time in the Southeast, the Craven, Onslow, Jones, Pender and New Hanover Counties have a, some kind of functioning TLC and Lenore is coming soon. So that's really, that's impact. That's really exciting and I geek out over such things. So it's really cool. And last but not least, as we just heard in the student presentation, as we just heard from Julie and Leah, the, it's, it's just collaboration is what gives teachers life and keeps them, keeps them going. I'm speaking for myself here, but the research supports it. And so this is a great opportunity for collaboration through Teacher Leadership Councils. And we know that that type of thing, that type of camaraderie and working together helps keep, keep us around. And so I just appreciate your time and I think we have something else to wrap. Maybe, maybe one more? There we go.
Yeah, you've already heard, I guess, I'm going to try to wrap up on this.
Absolutely.
Okay. You've already heard about our working groups and what we've done with Beginning Teacher Support, Teacher Recruitment and Teacher, and Teacher Retention and, and the way we've been able to collaborate on that. But we'll skip ahead to the next slide. The Teacher Leadership Council, really, we have some questions about what's next. So the next things that we're going to do are to analyze the 2024 Teacher Working Condition, Teacher Working Condition Survey data to regional recruitment and retention data to see if regionally districts can utilize the TWC data to help increase their pipeline and teacher support. So we know that there are some trends in certain regions where teacher recruitment and retention, around teacher recruitment and retention, we really want to use the TWCS to be able to, she's not on here, so I can't see how to get her in. So to be able to see how that, how districts could use that to help increase their own pipeline. We also want to compare that to some new Pew Research that came out of the Pew Research Center on Teacher Job Satisfaction to identify what North Carolina is doing well and what we can do better. And then to continue to work regionally to build teacher voice across the areas of the profession and build external stakeholder partners to bring greater professionalism and understanding to the educational system. So we have some work ahead of us. We think it's really important for, for this work to continue and for the teachers to, for us to be able to add more teachers to this group and continue to get more teacher voice so that we can truly bring teachers into the space and the rooms where things are happening. This is in your board material, so I'll let you read this. This is just some impact quotes from this. But it has questions here, but actually we have a teacher activity. So Leah is passing out what is called a deposit ticket. So a deposit ticket I used to use in my classroom and a deposit ticket I would give to my students. And I would say, like a bank, you cannot get money out of the ATM unless you deposit money into it. So I have come before you for three months to talk about the Teacher Leadership Council. And I ask you, what could you get out of the Teacher Leadership Council? How could you utilize these teachers, their voices, their expertise and their engagement? But what also are you going to put into it? Are you going to deposit into it a question that we should address? Are you going to deposit into it a date you would like to come and meet with us and, and learn more about us? Or let us learn more about you and your work and your, your passions? Are you going to offer to come and meet with us in person at the AIM Conference and engage in some of the professional development that we're bringing there? What is it that you could deposit into the Teacher Leadership Council so that we can grow your, your input with interest and bring it back to you in a greater, a greater perspective? And I'll, that is all we have.
Questions or comments from my colleagues?
I have a quick question.
Olivia.
Thank you so much. So my question, rather than write it, I'll just say it, okay? Is this, have you, have you.
Well, that helps, thank you. Have you thought about, or maybe you've already done this, well, maybe working with high schools? Done anything with meeting with high schools, like with students who might be interested in the profession down the road?
Sure. So that's actually something that we're working on this year and growing this work into the AIM Conference. So we're meeting with teacher cadet, we have some teacher cadet teachers and teaching as a profession teachers on the council. So we're meeting with them and with their greater organizations to be able to bring future teachers who are in high school or at a, at a college in an EPP to the AIM Conference to be able to be a part of the teacher work that we're going to be doing at the AIM Conference on the Tuesday and Wednesday of the conference. So yes, we are not going into the high schools to do that, but we're inviting those groups to bring their teachers and their students to the conference. In fact, I think Jenny Bryan from Brunswick County is going to bring her Teaching as a Profession class. And we're looking at some funding. I have already put a bug in someone's ear who says that they think that they have enough funding to help support bringing those future teachers to the conference.
Is there still an organization, Future Teachers of America?
Um, yes, it, in some places.
There's multiple, there are multiple like clubs and affinity groups and even classes that our students take to grow your own and to, to do teacher preparation all throughout the state. Just to shout out, one member of our, of our TLC actually just hosted the Future Teachers of Henderson County Symposium where he invited multiple colleges and universities to come to Henderson County and all of their teacher cadet courses, all their teacher, you know, pre-service teacher classes came and learned what it's like to be a teacher for the day. And it was really impactful. But that's the kind of work that we do on the TLC is we teach, we help our teachers grow their leadership capacity so they can benefit what's happening in their districts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Are you all going to come hang out with us at the TLC sometime?
Yeah.
I would love that.
Sounds like fun.
Catherine did, it was so fun. She did, she's done it multiple times.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. She's here.
I'm going to write your paper, everybody, it doesn't need today. You could think about it, maybe it's tomorrow. That's not going to work.
So I believe that concludes our agenda for planning and work session. We'll pause now. Does anyone have any reflections or comments about the last two days they'd like to share? Ms. Camons?
Incredible learning experience and I love the interconnectedness of what we've done over the last two days. It's going to take a while to digest all this and, and move forward in a positive way with a lot of what we've heard, but I'm just, it was just, I, I think it was just a great two days. Thank you, Rupen and everybody else who was part of it.
Yeah, truth be told, this was largely Rupen's design. And so would you join me in thanking him for his great work on this? Other thoughts?
Last week, I had the honor of attending a summit that Kristy Van Aken and others hosted at Fidelity Investments and RTP that was dedicated to the Career Development Planning Success Summit. So it's an initial meeting with counselors, our, our school counselors, career and technical education folks, students and other teachers to start looking at ensuring that our districts will be successful in implementing the career development plan legislation. And my role was to host a panel with students who represented our three Es of enlist, employ and roll. And we had four students altogether and one of our students was particularly interested in career development planning because she said that students don't know what a, what careers are available to them or what, what any career might look like. And so the idea that starting in elementary school, that students might start having those conversations was very appealing and all of the students on the panel agreed. And she said that when she was. And she said that when she was in the sixth grade, she wanted to be a judge. And she wasn't sure what sparked that interest in her, but she wanted to be a judge. And then when she was in high school, she found out that judges had to go to law school and that she, and be a lawyer before being a judge, and that that did not appeal to her. And so she changed course. And in that moment, I thought to myself, well, you know, there's no mystery to kids about what it means to be a teacher. They see it every day. They see it every day, what, the, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So there's, there's no mystery there. And I think that that is, that, that fact has the potential to be the greatest asset for the profession or its greatest downfall. Because we, those of us who work in education, but unfortunately, also our teachers, have that responsibility on them to model what the profession could be. And so I think that's why all of us here take the work that we've done the last two days so seriously, because we want to do everything we can to make sure that teachers are able to put their best foot forward and be champions for their chosen profession. And, and so I just thank Rupen, I, I thank Julie for all of, of her work with our student group and, and all of you who had a, played a role in highlighting all of the, the amazing good news about the profession, including Dr. Korn and, and the reworking of the Teacher Working Condition Survey and all of the amazing information we're going to learn now because of the high participation rate, because it's a more valid and reliable survey, because so many teachers chose to share their personal information with us. We are going to learn so much. And, and so I, I'm feeling very hopeful from everything that we've heard today, especially our teacher apprenticeship program information that, that we learned. And I, I just, I feel like there's so much hope for spreading the good news of what it means to, to be a teacher and to work in education. And, and I thank you for that, Rupen.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other comments? Okay. So like many of you, I need to process a lot of this, but here's some initial reflections. We started the day reviewing the comprehensive plan and how relevant it is today as it was four years ago when it was written. And nearly every element that we learned about, touched on in this meeting, is somehow in that plan. And the theme of the first item was, we're doing a lot of good stuff. We need more of it. We need to increase access. We need to grow. We need to give more students, teachers, opportunities. But then we started looking specifically at the first goal of the plan, an effective teacher in every classroom, and how unifying that, that goal is. And the different elements we looked at, teacher apprenticeships, teacher cadet, advanced teaching roles, beginning teacher support, strategic staffing, teaching as a team, not as an individual, licensure reform, and how does teachers advance in their careers without leaving the classroom? And we touched briefly on the continued struggles we have with how do we define and measure effectiveness other than one standardized test a year for a few teachers across our state, but do it for every teacher in a meaningful way that helps them gain in their profession? And the way that lands on me is we're really talking about redesigning the whole profession of teaching in North Carolina. Instead of looking at each of those parts individually, looking at them together as a system and all the other systems we have that affect teaching and learning in our state, that's really what we're talking about. We can't just do this piecemeal. We have complex problems that require comprehensive solutions and tremendous opportunities if we'll come together and tackle these problems and opportunities. And after listening especially to our teachers today, I can't help but hunger for more direct contact with our teachers. I mean, if we're redesigning their profession, we ought to start with them. They ought to be on the front lines, designing, testing, deciding where their profession goes. And so somehow in the days ahead, we've got to figure out how to do that and how to take these complex issues and break them in, or work them into meaningful, manageable elements that we can make progress on. And then somehow develop a unified spirit across our state to commit to investing, solving, and delivering on the promise of what it means to be a teacher in North Carolina. Because what this meeting has reminded me of is if we take care of our teachers, they'll more than take care of our students, and the outcomes will lead to our prosperity. So that's what this two days has spoken to me, and I look forward to hearing more of your thoughts on these topics going forward. But this does conclude our planning and work session for today. Our next one will be in November 5th and 7th, 5th through the 7th. We'll be in a different region of our state, and more information will be forthcoming. I look forward to that, that planning and work session because I'm sure it'll build on this one. More immediately, tomorrow, May 2nd, we'll be back at Appalachian State, and we'll be meeting in the Mark E. Rick's Athletic Complex next door to where we are now for our monthly State Board of Education meeting, and the agenda is posted on E-Board for all review. We will not be coming back into open session at the conclusion of this meeting, but we'll now turn to go into closed session, and I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session and turn to my colleague, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318, 11, parentheses, A, parentheses, 1, parentheses, 3, and 6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, Sections 115(c)(319) and 321 and 132-61(c) at sequence. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of public officers or employees or prospective public officers or employees, and to consult with our attorneys in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the public body, including a discussion of the following pending cases. Vega versus NCDPI, Miller versus NCDPI, and AB versus North Carolina School for the Death.
Motion by Mr. Blackburn. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Keenan. Mr. Pforia?
Dr. Oxenden?
Yes.
Ms. Camins?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Dr. Tipton Rogers? Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell? Lieutenant Governor Robinson? Vice Chair Duncan? Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. We will begin closed session at 4:30 in this room. So if you're not participating in closed session, you could excuse yourself. We appreciate it, and we'll convene at 4:30.